Call the meeting to order on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. I would ask Kelly to note roll call. I will note that Teshidra is ill and so she will not be joining us. I don't have any specific announcements for the committee of the whole, so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from 10:15, 2024.
Don't move.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? Any comments or corrections? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aye. You just missed the motion to approve the minutes. Would you? Okay. All right, we'll move to items for discussion. And the first item is discussion regarding potential use of funds from an affordable housing extension of tax increment district number three. Mr. Alon is on. We'll have his presentation first.
So this was a memo in your packet, kind of based off of our conversation that we had last month, maybe? Yeah, last month. Basically, the goal here tonight is just to get feedback from you as to whether or not this feels like the right track with some of these things. And then there's some more detailed questions, I guess, are part of this. And then the thought is that it'll come back to subsequent meetings with a little bit more refinement as we go along. So in your memo with the allocation from tid three, what I'm putting forth here is a split into two separate funds. One is a larger affordable housing fund that would assist larger scale development. And then the latter part is, I guess, a smaller scale, although still significant influx of money that would go towards owner occupied development that hit certain priorities that we identified through our activities over the last year. The first of those, the larger fund, is a little bit less fleshed out in the memo. We'll come back to that probably at another meeting with more details in terms of scoring criteria and some of that other, some of the other things associated with that. But I wanted to start with some of the owner occupied stuff to just kind of run that by you and kind of see how we're doing with that. Both of these would potentially be set up so that they could allow for future contributions. So this basically establishes a framework or a structure. If we ever wanted to consider when future tids fall off, they could potentially go into either of these funds to recapitalize. Just to note too, as a reminder, anytime you're making that decision with a district closing, you don't have to take the full year of increments. So if you see one of these programs is either diminished in funds and you don't want to fund it fully, but you still want to provide some capital, you have an option to choose up to that full 12 months of extension. So I'll just kind of walk through this briefly. The first fund is that larger scale one. Again, the thought with this, at least as it's currently proposed, would be to take this similar to how you all review TIF proposals. So a case by case basis, when a development comes forward, again, we could develop a scoring criteria matrix that hits some of the priorities that we identified in the strategy that we put together, as well as looking at things that you do with a TIF agreement. So tax based generation. Hopefully next year, as we start to get a better grip on how development, various kinds of development impact our services, that could also be a criteria to bring into evaluating those. We talked a little bit at the last meeting about the importance of definitions as well. So a potential definition, I know we kind of toss around the term workforce quite a bit. Typically, I think when workforce is thought of, it's anywhere between 60% to 120% area median income, which is a very large range. I'm suggesting that maybe we consider 80% AMI as a good starting point, but that's certainly open discussion. And then affordable would potentially be defined as not spending more than 30% of your gross income on housing costs, and that includes utilities. And that definition of affordable or not cost burned, I guess, is another way that that's typically thrown around. That one has more consensus, I will say, in housing circles than that workforce definition. So just wanted to throw those out there because we also talked about the definition component to all this. So I could pause there. Again, there's not a whole lot of detail in this first little fund per se. More of that and more of our discussion tonight, I'm anticipating will come in the next set of things. But I'll pause there to see if there's any real quick input to that.
Any questions? Rebecca?
Not so much a question as a preference. I'd like to see it more towards owner occupied rather than rental. I'm not opposed to it going to rental. I would just like the owner occupied to be a preference. It's my preference.
Jim?
I'd say I have the same preference. I would like to see more like a 50/50 or even 75 towards, say, existing homes. I would say that owner occupied is nice, but I would even be I'm a proponent for even like, say, remodeling some of these like duplexes and fourplexes. I'm more concerned about our existing stack of homes that the maintenance comes up. And I see this as a real nice way that we can return, say, the gift of TIFs back to our residents.
Okay.
So to that point, some of the rest of what we'll talk about might hit more on that. But those are, I'm taking notes. So the second, anything else before I move on? The second piece of this would be the second set of funds, I guess, which would be, I'm calling it the home improvement down payment assistance funds. One of the, a couple of the different priorities that we saw were for seniors specifically. So we had the focus groups as well as the workshops and the survey. And providing for home improvements for seniors to do aging in place, accessibility stuff surfaced as a high priority, as well as providing, wanting to get single families, small, younger families into there, specifically the ones that are more of our workforce level. So some of these are geared towards that. The thought would be that, again, per statute, at least 75% of the funds that you're taking from the district for this extension have to be used to benefit affordable housing. The additional 25% can be used to benefit housing in general, the housing stock. So taking that split and projecting or estimating what that increment might be, that'd be roughly $150,000 to be spread across a few different programs here. And this is geared more towards, the way that this is set up is geared more towards owner occupied housing. Potentially, we talked, I know Jane, you mentioned the concern about how does all of this get administered? So potentially, this could be a program that could be administered by the CDA. We currently, the CDA currently administers a revolving loan program, which could be structured similarly. And some of the administrative activities are similar. That entails marketing, outreach, processing applications, actually doing the fund dispersment, those types of things, as well as monitoring, reporting. Applicants could apply for any four categories. And those four categories, I'll talk about in a little bit, but I'll just lay them out here. And let me preface this by saying that in the memo, it may not be, I didn't quite put it in there, but we could certainly have some qualifications about income qualifications. Or you were talking, Jim, about housing stock. I mean, there could also be restrictions on assessed home value. And I just think of an example, like, so this first one here that I'll go into a little bit more is the aging in place and accessibility. So say somebody who's 62 and up also lives in a house that's worth 3/4 of a million dollars and makes $175,000 a year. Is that who we really want to target for these home improvements or not? So it's just something else to think about when we're talking about eligibility. So the aging in place and accessibility, the way that I have this drawn up right now is it would be for eligible to applicants 62 and up could be potentially loans or grants, a max loan amount of $15,000 or a max grant amount of $7,500. Excuse me, I think I, this program was actually not restricted to 62 and up. So let's say you're 60 and you still have the desire to make aging in place improvements or accessibility improvements. You could potentially do that as well in this program. You just wouldn't be eligible for a grant. That 62 is, 62 and 55 in the housing world are where you see those elderly or senior programs.
Be careful. Them's fighting words, man.
Yeah, I know. I was saying that very carefully. But those are kind of the two ages, I guess, that you see different kind of programs oriented towards. Again, if we were to consider doing loans, these could either be 0% interest loans. So they're literally just paying them back. Or there could be a nominal interest to cover administrative costs, those types of things. The thought would be that these would be fully amortized over 10 years. Or if somebody were to sell their home, then that would be a point of repayment as well. And then restrictions that would basically not allow for people to take advantage of this program to update a house and then go flip it, right? So that's one program geared towards helping our seniors make those improvements so that they can stay in their homes. And then from eligibility standpoint, they have to be the homeowner and they have to occupy the house. Second set would be emergency health and safety hazard mitigation. So this was not something that was identified as a priority in any of our housing activities. It was something that I saw two communities, one of Manona, I can't remember the other community that did it. And I thought it was a decent idea, so I would bring it up here. But certainly, I will admit that that did not come up as a priority. But again, the thought is to provide potentially loans with a maximum of $20,000 or grants of $7,500. Similar terms is what we just talked about in order to remediate an emergent condition. So somebody has, I don't know, I mean, I think we just heard about a house fire here yesterday or today. Those types of things to be able to get capital quickly to help out with those. And that could also be further refined with income restrictions as well. A third set here would be the first time home buyer down payment assistance. So one of the other priorities that we saw in the housing activities was we wanted to have housing stock to make homeownership more accessible for our young workforce families. And this would potentially go towards that. So there's quite a few different down payment assistance programs out there at a state level or different financial institutions. This would be a more accessible down payment assistant program, again, with income eligibility requirements. I would say that we could probably also add some additional criteria on there, which would mean we would want to review the terms of their financing before providing any assistance, right? We want to make sure that the funds, not that a bank is not doing their due diligence, but maybe in a different place and time, it would have been a different question, that they're going to be able to use these funds and afford to live in this home for a period of time. So in those cases, I would imagine that those down payment assistance programs might be 0% interest loans. Again, seeing that money come back to make a sustainable program, but providing capital to somebody to get into a home and to become a resident of this community. And then the final category here, sort of spinning off of that, Jane, I think you had mentioned that the last one, asking Al and myself, would it be possible to target some of these programs to public service workers or some of these other categories that we had identified? So this would be a down payment assistance program that would be geared towards fire, EMS, school teachers, library, public service. Again, income restricted or income eligibility requirements would have to be met. We'd also have to further define who those employers are and put some constraints around that as well. But this would sort of mimic that first time home buyer assistance program, except geared towards people who are in the public service sector, so to speak. So I'll pause there before I ask for a little bit more input on some specifics and just say generally, you know, how does, how does this feel in terms of a direction?
Comments? Jim? And then Rebecca?
I'd say generally, good. I am a bit hesitant for the down payment. Option in why I say that I'd rather see, say, home improvements go in. So I'd be more, I'm sorry, I can't see it quite on the screen, but you're talking, say, first time home buyers down payment assisted, maybe it'd be first time home buyers, like loan program, sort of like how you did in other ones where if you're above, what was it, 62? If you're within the first, say, three years of owning a home and now you need to do a roof, this is a way, say, you rather than give them the $20,000 for the down payment, they would know that that's available for them or the improvement once they get into the home. Get some sort of sweat equity into the village that way.
Okay. Rebecca?
Yeah, thanks for saying that because I 100% agree with you on that comment. I like the, I like the, how this is put on here. I like how it's broken down. As far as you were mentioning, you know, like a, making sure that people are able to pay it back and stuff like that, those words, an actual loan. I'm assuming, because it, you mentioned, we don't want it where somebody uses it and then flips a home. Okay. I would assume that to help avoid that situation or in case it should happen, that we would put a lien for that amount. Or is that not something that, because we need to make sure that they don't end up running out on it.
Right. And I think with, with any of these, particularly when we're, that was one of the questions that I wanted a little bit more guidance on. When we're talking about potentially doing these as loans as well, I think our recourse, and I'll defer to the legal team over here, our recourse is going to be, it's going to be limited and tough to actually.
Because we would be down the line. I understand that.
Second position and a nominal amount. So I think, I think you almost have to be comfortable with an eventuality where there's going to be bad loans, so to speak.
So it would be unsecured?
From our standpoint, so, I mean, when we do our CDA loans, those will have a personal guarantee or we will, that's really how we do it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what was expected on there.
Yeah. I mean, I guess that's something that we'd have to think through a little bit more because, you know, I also don't want to just go throwing that out there and having, you know, bad actors, I guess, so to speak. But I will say that I think our recourse is probably limited.
Okay. And the only other thing I had was I noticed something about earning at or below 80% of the area median income. I think there should be a limit on the lowest that they could make as well, not just below. Because, I mean, there's some people, let's face it, they, they may meet that technical requirement, but they're not going to be able to pay it back.
Right.
Because they just don't make even enough to support a mortgage loan.
Sure.
So we need to make sure that these people are able to make those payments.
Yeah. So I think this, those are all good, good points and things that we would have to build into this program. What's before you here and what we're kind of talking about is a little bit light on the guardrails side of things. But we would build those things and similar to how we do with CDA.
Okay, thanks.
I think, I think it's also important to note that these, these folks would be screened by a bank as well. And they would make sure they were credit worthy. I'm sort of on the flip side of the down payment. My experience over the years is there are many people that would make good homeowners, but they cannot get a down payment together. They can make the mortgage payment, they can even pay their taxes, you know, escrow them, but they cannot get that down payment together. And over the years, from participation in, in a variety of housing programs, I have found that pride of ownership is a big deal. And they often become very good community members and responsible homeowners. So I wouldn't want to throw that out because it could be vital to building a stronger forest.
Yeah. So I just spent the last day and a half at the WIDA housing conference. So, I mean, not that this is anything new, but having to come up with a down payment is a huge barrier oftentimes to moving it, for somebody moving into a new socioeconomic position in homeownership, for sure.
Yes, Jim?
Would, would this down payment program affect getting a loan? Say if, say if I go to a bank and want to buy a house, they want to see that my down payment money is mine? Would that affect it? You know, you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
It's like my neighbor, their parents bought the house.
Right.
And it's one way of getting the kid in the house, very good neighbor.
Sure.
You know, but banks will require to see where the money is coming from. Would this affect that? Would that be accepted?
Yeah, that's a good point. So I think before we would, we would move forward with anything, I'd try to get better input on that. Would they see that as equity? Or would they just see that as more debt on it? And they might see that as more debt. So that's a good point.
And I'm back to where Rebecca talked about homeownership. And I firmly believe in that, a path to owning the property instead of just being warehoused. Because there is no future in just being warehoused. Whereas homeownership, you have equity and you have something. It's going to take eight to 10 years, maybe. But you have something if you want to move on or whatever.
Sure.
What do you mean by being warehoused?
Being put in, say, an apartment with no path to homeownership of any kind. I mean, there's apartments here, it's $2,000 a month, that's $24,000 a year that at the end of the year, December 31st, you have nothing to show for it. You've been housed, but it's a path that is tough to break out of. You're, you're getting stuck in that. Not everybody, but I, I play cards with people that are retired. They, they see no problem in paying $2,000 a month because they don't have to shovel snow, their car's in an underground garage. For other people, it's tough to come up with a down payment when the, and the problem is the majority of your income or a lot of it is going towards that rent. You're unable to get that down payment. And that's, that's the core problem is getting a down payment.
Sure.
Especially with today's prices.
Yeah. No, I mean, those are all, you're hitting on.
I mean, I got a, I got a, when I bought my house 37 years ago, I got a WIDA loan. And I was able to put 10% down instead of the normal 20 at the time. And I used the other 10, or the other 10% to rewire it, do this, do that, you know?
Which I think is a really a good anecdote, right? Because maybe there's also an opportunity to do a combined program. So there's like, if we're particular, to take Jim's priority here, particularly focusing on some of the aging housing stock and trying to get people into that, but also trying to get to a homeownership place for people who can't necessarily get out here. I mean, maybe there's a combination where there's a down payment assistance program, knowing that this house that you're moving into has a certain criteria of there's going to be improvements that need to be made. And then kind of pairing that with this improvement program as well as sort of hybridizing that approach.
Okay, Rebecca?
Just to go to his point about would this affect their ability with the bank? I'm assuming because it's not, you're not using the house as equity or as, as security to secure the loan, that this would be considered a personal loan, not necessarily for the house. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I, which means where did the money come from? Well, who knows? I'm just throwing that out. I don't know if that's, if that would be accurate or not, but it is a valid question because that, that has come up for people that I know. And Jane, I do agree with you about, there are some folks, I, there's a, one lady I know for sure who, if this program was available, it would make it much easier for her to be able to finally buy a home here. So.
Yep.
And the only other thing that I might suggest is there are probably some banks that do home mortgages that would work with us and say, if they can get this for down payment money under certain terms, then we can look at the other money and they might treat it like a bridge loan or other, other vehicles.
Yeah. I think how that would be viewed is something that I still need to flesh out.
Yep.
Okay. Well, this, this has been extremely helpful. A couple quick, specific questions. It sounds like the loan and grant thing is maybe contingent contingent upon getting a little bit more information. But conceptually, the idea of loans, let's say, even for a down payment assistant aside, for home improvements, loans versus grants, where does the temperature sit on that distinction, I guess?
The question is, which do we prefer?
Yeah. I mean, is there an opposition to doing loans versus grants? Is there a preference for one or the other? Or having the availability to do both is a good thing?
I would support doing both, actually. But Jim?
I would say I would support doing both. I could see that the grants should be a lower income, maybe. But again, my priority is I don't want neighborhoods to fall down for lack of improvements on homes. So another idea might be to target neighborhoods for grants if it's, say, getting run down or something.
Yeah, or aging homes or, yep, I would agree with that.
So.
I was, I was going to say basically the same thing, that I'm open to both. But I definitely think that income would have to play a big factor in the, the grants. But also I like the idea of maybe targeting some of the older homes in some of the neighborhoods where maybe they need a little bit more TLC just because it's been hard.
Sure.
Jan?
I would agree that I would be, I would go for both, the grant and the loan. And I like the idea with the grant amount being lower and also putting some sort of cap on income for that. But yeah, I agree with what Rebecca and Jim are saying on both accounts.
Okay. And as far as interest goes on loans, 0%? A nominal percentage?
I think. Zero? Yes?
$150,000 at 2%, you're only $3,000. Would that cover the administrative costs?
$3,000 annually?
Trust that 2% on that loan a year. We need to cover our costs somewhere.
Sure. Probably not. I mean, if, and I say that because if we're lending out $150,000 at these, these maximum amounts, that means we're doing a lot, which is a good thing. But, you know, to, to cover the staff time, $3,000 at however many projects that would be, probably not.
Probably. Okay, thanks.
And then, sorry, one more question first. What about administration through the CDA?
Are you thinking of Jay?
No.
No?
I mean, I guess, I guess it doesn't matter. It'd be me.
Well, that's where I get worried.
Okay.
You're really good. And we don't want to lose you to administrative staff work. So.
Well, I said, it would be a team effort.
Yeah.
I'd shove most of it over to Carol, actually.
And I leave, I leave, I leave, I leave staff this.
You were waiting for that one, or did Bill?
But, you know, Bill manages the staff and I understand that. But I do worry about, we keep dumping on you.
Well, I will say, so.
Where you keep taking it. Where you keep taking it.
For example, for the CDA program, there are a number of people who touch that, right? There's additional staff involved with the whole finance and admin team too, so. I guess no matter how you slice it, whether it's a CDA program or a village program, it's still going to hit the same people. So maybe that's a moot point.
Bill, you were wanting to say something.
Yeah, so just just two comments here. Uh, the first being that Dane County Urban Consortium has very similar programs uh to the ones that have been proposed. Uh, I recently took up participated in their strategic planning where they are looking to reallocate federal funding towards a lot of these programs in different categories. And the down payment was uh a large, a big discussion during that point too. They'd never have enough money to help the situation. Considering the source of their funding, you know, their target is although addressing affordable housing um does address a larger group than what ours would, our program would. And so um, you know, whether we talked about, you know, how are we able to help stack potential resources to get someone that maybe under just one program couldn't could not afford to get into a a house here in the forest? Or trying to fill in some of those gaps between uh what the village needs pursuant to our study and what the consortium offers? And so just want to, again, say that that's out there. Um, related to the staffing issue, um, I believe that's a that's a cost that potentially could be covered also by funds from this um extension. So, you know, it would be tricky in that, you know, the funds are a one-time allocation. But if there's a long-term strategy to continue to use the the tax increment uh extensions ongoing, we do have a number of tax increment districts and then putting into a strategy of closing them, you know, every two years um to sustain that that position at least until we get uh idea would be that he would sustain it in the interim and then when the uh tax increment district extension ends, you build that right into um the excess increments that you have. So there's a we can put together a strategy and a pathway to get to a position specifically addressing uh housing uh tenant uh housing affordability in in the forest.
You know, one other point, we know from talking to people, all of us, I think, that there's a need in our community for programs like this. I'm not sure we know numbers. Um, and I'm not sure we've ever um done any kind of needs assessment. I'm just wondering if our university program could help with something like that? Because should we be able to document with a a a well-done needs assessment um what's out there? There are there are national grants like Ford Foundation dollars that are available that could in fact supplement support or really provide a lot of um dollars for programs like this. And then we might be able to really staff it.
Uh, so we can definitely try to place it. It is a subject, I believe, of interest uh for, I think, a lot of the courses that they may have. Um, and considering that we're going into a timeframe here where they're playing, they're trying to place uh projects into classes. We do have um several studies and projects underway, a lot more than what had originally been proposed. So I get I get cautious about staff time allocation towards guidance for other students. Um, but we can definitely try to see if that's a up program that can be placed.
And are you um feeling okay about the quality of the work they're doing?
Um, so I think Judd can probably attest to that. He's been working primarily, I think, his second group now. Um, the first was Heidi Putnam, um, and I think that was a, yeah, a master's level uh resource. Yet to see, uh, because we have a lot of big projects coming up. But the interaction, um, the professionalism, I think that's being showed on both sides. Um, and sitting through at least the initial meetings here um show that it it's been a rewarding program.
Okay.
And when you're trying to, I mean, it sounds like you're trying to account for demand for some of these things, what's the actual need? And that could be as simple as administering, developing and administering a survey, which I think those groups could do. Um, but on that note, so I had gone back and forth as to whether having sort of these four buckets was diluting our our pool and our impact or whether we should have a more focused concentrated in one area or another. And I think one of the benefits of doing it this way is the fact that we don't actually understand what the full demand is for these. We have sort of an idea. We've heard these things. We've seen it in our activities, the surveys, et cetera. But when it when a push comes to shove, are people going to use these programs? And I think having a a couple of different options from the outset will allow us to see what that demand actually is from from the start and then maybe refine the program, iterate upon that and either hone in on one or another or see where our gaps are.
Good point. Rebecca?
With that comment, it brought to mind the question, um, how are we going to let people know?
Yeah, um, using our communication channels that we do have. So one of the things that's on my list of stuff um is to turn the Engage to Forest Housing Workshop page that we did into more of a housing platform in general for these types of activities. Um, so that would be one way, our social media communications, all the normal ways that we communicate currently.
So for homeowners, I see that being relatively effective, but what about renters?
In.
Renters in the community who may not be tapped into those communication links because, one, they're not paying property taxes, so why do they care? They may or may not be paying for water and sewer. Um, so that may they be, I mean, they're, we need to find a way because some of these some of these programs are aimed towards those exact people.
Sure.
The people that are trying to get into into homeownership and
Sure.
so we need to figure out a strategy for how to communicate with them.
Well, theoretically, they still have social media, so that's one.
Yes, but everybody.
But I will say too, there are other groups. So in the county, there's housing is, as you all know, especially with Dane County, is like one of the preeminent issues right now. And so there are a lot of people that are working together to promote these kinds of programs, not just within, because we're also talking about potentially attracting people from outside the community to purchase their first home here, right? Um, so there's a lot of cross-promotion that I think could probably happen.
Bill Chang?
Yeah, so the communication stream really depends on the program itself, right? So when you're talking about renters, uh, several ideas come to mind, not only social media and and our common uh outlets that we have uh with the village, but we can reach out directly to the developers when they come in. We can have it be a part of a development agreement. Now, this stuff kind of spreads like wildfire, right? So once it's out there, people know, people talk. Um, not only do we work with the developers, we maybe will work with other agencies like consortium, where if it if they may not qualify for consortium funding, they may, you know, um, refer them over to the village. So there's 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 connections that are being made um outside the purview of, um, you know, folks on the outside. But um, you know, you can go to a bank, you can have the flyers, you have the application material set at the bank. So if they, per se, come in for a loan, they don't qualify for a loan, they can apply for our village program. So depending on the program, we will have to, like you said, to come up with a strategy, how do we um distribute that information?
And just to to be one more thing that I wanted to say, um, the consortium, so consortium sounds like has down payment assistance, WIDA has some down payment assistance. There are different entities that have these down payment assistance programs. Oftentimes, it's, they're not heavily, heavily utilized by Joe Schmo because they're more complicated programs to access. There's a little bit more rules and requirements associated with them. Um, having a simpler local program, I think, would be a big benefit to reducing some of those barriers, but also it is stackable with those programs, right? So somebody accessing down payment assistance through Village of DeForest can also access down payment assistance through some of these others and combine them to to really put themselves in a good place.
Okay.
Yeah, part of the problem is you can't find a house for less than $300,000 in DeForest, so 10% down payment on that is $30,000. And these numbers might help, but you know, it's different if it was 150, 159,000 and that's what we're up against. That's one of the issues.
It's all very complicated. Okay, Jim?
I was just going to add a little bit to what Bill was saying and what was in my head when I was talking about like a first-time homebuyer improvement to more or less stay away from, say, that initial mortgage loan and getting caught in a maybe gray area if it's a loan or a grant and type thing. That was sort of a little bit of an aside. What I see happening is, okay, somebody's looking for a home and they find their home that they think they like, but oh, in this needs to be done. It's got an orange kitchen yet or it's got the roof that needs to be done and they're ready to walk away. Where I think sort of like what Bill said, you're going to have the realtor on board knowing about these programs. Now they're going to say, maybe don't walk away from this because you qualify for this and now you can get the five or 10,000 to do that rough and this works. So I think we got a lot of marketing people out there that we don't even know of until we create the programs.
Good, good point, Jim. Thank you. All right, are there any other? Any other comments?
I guess just one last question. So the these four categories, sort of that senior category, the public service category, first-time homebuyers and the um emergency assistance, do those all seem reasonable? Is there anything we missed out of those? Any of those that you would like to not have included in this?
Can you say them one more time?
Yep, so one was the aging in place, um, the other was the emergency assistance for, oh, my papers are all messed up, emergency assistance and then first-time homebuyers and then uh the public service workers, down payment assistance.
I guess my only comment would be, do we want to put a priority on the on the four categories?
Sure.
And is there a maximum that we're going to do for each one? Or if if we see that we have a larger need in one area, are we going to continue or are we going to keep them? I guess that's my question is, is it going to be this amount for this amount, this amount for, you know?
Yeah.
I kind of like to see it kind of be.
Sure.
Especially until we know, kind of like what Jane was talking about, what our actual needs are.
That makes sense.
Um, and we may want to give staff some flexibility to move things around. Jim and then Jan?
I mainly just want to get something started, so I
Yeah.
already gave away my hand, but I'm willing to outprove anything to get something rolling like this. But I'm a little bit concerned about having like age restrictions because to me it's more about the affordability. I know, I forget the term already, but the age in place, it's like, personally, I don't necessarily care if the person's 62 or if they're 45, if they need money to do a home improvements and say that that would be enough to to trip off a a window replacement or whatever, I would I'd be for that. But again, I just want to get things rolling. Like you said, we don't know the demand, so it's maybe a little bit too early to say, open up the windows too much or I shouldn't I used windows again, but open up the the opportunity to, why? Because we might get flooded, so maybe we start at a limited windows again, see how it goes.
We're into windows. Jan and then Bill Chang?
Um, I just wanted to touch on the amounts. So right now, you know, what you kind of have written down here is the 450,000 for the Affordable Housing Fund and then 150,000 for the um Home Improvement Down Payment Assistant Fund. I'd like to see those be more even, those numbers, more 50/50.
Can we do that?
If we can do that.
Good.
Yeah, I would too, if we can do it.
All right, Bill Chang?
That was similar to my point and 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 question of clarification here. So it looks like you you are looking at the 75%, 25% allocation based off of what's required for affordable housing and what's allowed about 25% to anything else housing. The programs that you have under the uh the rehab and and uh down payment assistance, some of those cater specifically to um, you know, senior or workforce, uh, which could also qualify under the affordable. So that's how I think you would make that shift, get some of those programs under the affordable program.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that that helps a lot. Um, because if we could shift it then, some of that from down below to up above, that would that would make more sense. So, yeah, that helps a lot, Bill.
So the one, the one thing, I guess, curveball that I'll throw in on that, I I totally get where you're coming from and we could definitely make that shift. Um, but I think at the last meeting, there was a mention too, and I think you might have even mentioned it too, about um the desire for owner occupied and providing for affordable housing for owner occupied stuff. And we've talked a little bit about habitat, habitat for humanity. And so if we shift those, the balance of those funds more into these smaller programs, quote unquote, smaller programs. Um, so the thought that I was going through is that that larger fund would be more available for, or the one that's currently 450 would be more available for a larger scale development, like a habitat development coming in. So it would kind of, it would just would change that. It's not a bad thing, just something to keep in mind.
Thank you. All right. One more thing, Bill?
Oh, no, I was going to say it's it's another prioritization of how you spend money in a village.
Yep, yep. The good news, when you build houses and put people in, homeownership were helping our tax base, so that's a good thing. All right, well, if there's nothing else on this and you choose to stay there, you may.
There, I will.
Um, we'll run through our our updates. Um, administrative update?
Uh, just quickly, Al and I and Mark Roffers met with representatives of Westport. I think we had a productive meeting. Uh, we'll be bringing some information at the next meeting in December um in closed session. There is a a hearing at Circuit Court on December 4th uh to see if Westport's petition qualifies. In addition to that, then I received a uh call from WKOW asking about our position on on the whole petition and I think that airs tonight, so you'll see, you may see that.
All right, thank you. Finance update, Carol?
I just wanted to share with you that um we did go out for a request for proposal to do our water rate study. And so we received um six proposals last week and we'll be going through those and reviewing those and following up with our, one of our vendors, just to confirm some information and then we'll come to you probably at the next meeting with our recommendation to move forward with that. Um, we are also in the middle of our sewer rate study, so we don't have the results from that yet, but hope to have that before the end of the year, preferably next meeting if we can get it all together and ready for you by then. And um we have audit dates for next year already. Um, village and CDA audits will be done the end of the last week in March and then um the the utility audit will be done the first week in April. So we expect to have our final reports in late June or early July, like. So we expect to have our final reports in late June or early July, like we typically do.
Great, thank you. All right. We don't have anybody from the police department unless is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. Public services, Judd?
A couple of quick updates. One, Northtown Road will be opening it in the real near future. The connection from where it ends in Windsor to the forest. Mr. Manhole isn't doing their work and we have to stripe the road, but so that road will be just about done. You could take Highway V and Northtown Road all the way down to 19, which is pretty exciting. Pepsi Way is under progress as well as Zaire Lane. That work will be done and knock on wood, we can be able to pave in early December. Weather cooperates with us for that, so we'll be working through that. We did send out about 1,400 letters to residents in the village that are mandated that we reach out to them because of EPA standards for lead and copper rules, specifically if they have, if we're unknown if they have lead or ductile, we needed to reach out to them. It's actually been pretty good. We've gotten a lot of responses back. We're able to get into homes to see what's there and then we can officially itemize what it is in the program we use and bring us better into better compliance with what the EPA is requiring. I mean, we're in full compliance with it, but we can further refine and have actual our data for it, so. Leaf fact trucks been running around. I encourage people to keep bringing their leaves to the terrace, not to the road. And that would be appreciated, but it's been busy, 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 so.
I've seen them come through. It's fun to watch. All right, Alex, community development, no? All right, Callie?
I have an election update, so just some numbers. We now have a total number of registered voters in the village of 8,285. At the election on the 5th, we had a total number of 7,383 voters. 4,722 of those were done via absentee. And included in that registered voter number, we had on election day 538 registrations throughout the village.
What was the absentee number?
The absentee number was 4,722.
Wow.
So we had a turnout of about 89% here in the village. The other thing going on is the Wisconsin Election Commission, after every general election, does randomly choose municipalities for a election equipment audit. The village of DeForest was luckily chosen. And so we will be conducting an audit of the election equipment from the village hall polling location. That will begin on Thursday at 8:00 AM. There are four races that we will need to be auditing this year. It is the president, vice president, the representative for Congress, the representative for Assembly and the district attorney. So it will be another large project to get through. I've hired several election workers to come in and help, so we are hoping to have that all completed in one day. If not, we will continue on Friday. And then for the people that are up for election, the spring election, I have given you your nomination paper paperwork packet. Just know that you can start circulating for signatures on December 1st. All forms must be turned in to me no later than January 7th, which seems a little late this year, but that is the first Tuesday in January. And if you choose to not run, your non candidacy paperwork does need to be returned to me no later than December 27. That is all.
All right, thank you. Reese, recreation and community enrichment?
Yeah, just wanted to share about some events coming up. So we have the holiday tree lighting that is going to be December 4th here in Fireman's Park. We have 16 trees that will be participating in the tree walk this year. I think last year we had 11. So we're seeing an increase in participation. And this year we'll actually be doing a tree like competition. So people will be able to vote on various topics. So it's people's choice, eco-friendly, best D Y I, D I Y, our homemade ornaments, most creative and community pride. So people can vote at the event or they'll be able to vote online through the whole month of December, as all the trees will be up through that time. So looking forward to that. And then that same week, we have the candlelight hike on December 6th at Western Green Park. So looking forward to another one, another great event for that one. Trish is also working on the shop local event program that more information, I mean, found an engaged de Forest about all the businesses that are participating. But I know she said that there were more businesses this year than there have been in the past. And if you go on the Engage page, there's a lot of great information on there. But that is the Friday after Thanksgiving, I'm pretty sure. Then we are seeking feedback on the farmer's market, areas that we might be able to improve for shoppers. We also sent a survey out to all of our vendors, just kind of looking for any feedback that we can get there. What draws you there or what doesn't draw you there? And then we're also looking for feedback on Yahar River Fest. We're going to be maybe looking to do some rebranding. We feel like maybe the catfish is not as fitting as it once was, since we don't really do anything with catfish for the event, so. And then the other really exciting part is that we have launched the Dragon Arts website. So if you go on the village website, you'll see the Dragon Arts page. And there actually is a page where you can start to see all the vendors that we already have signed up and pictures of their work. And it's it's really exciting. We've received already, we've accepted 34 applications. And last, this last year, there was a total of 132. So I feel like almost a quarter way of the total applications and we're not even to December is is pretty great. So that's really exciting. And then to get out of the events world, youth basketball is starting up here, so this year we have 231 kids registered. We have wait lists for K first and second grade. And so we're trying to work with the school district right now to see if we might be able to get an additional day to be able to offer some more opportunities for kids in the community. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, there is no closed session, so we will move to the the last items. But let me just say before you take, we're going to take a quick break before the board meeting. Judd brought us cookies tonight, so they're over on the counter. You're all welcome to try them. Yes, 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 he did. Really good. So with that, I would say we will take about a five minute break between meetings and we will return and start our village board meeting after that. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. We have some motions here. All right, that that's all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 5:58 PM of the village board to order at 6:05 PM on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. I would ask Callie to note roll call and note that Tashidra is not with us due to illness. And I would ask Bill Angriff to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Announcements? The village board will convene into closed session pursuant to section 19.85 1E of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tonight, negotiating a contract with Marco Technologies LLC. Consent agenda? I would entertain, well, unless someone wants something separated. I would entertain a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public appearances? We have a number of them that are not related to the public hearings. So I think we will start with those. Does that work? All right. So I will, and Johnny Johnson and, okay, others are online, so I just want to see who's online. All right. Johnny Johnson, let's start with you. And I would ask a couple of things. When we call your name and if you're online or in person, I would ask that you either unmute your mic if you're online or come to the table and turn the mic on. We need your name and address cited for the record. And then you have three minutes and we have a timer going. I don't know if you can see that. But if we will begin and if you would tell us your topic and then make your statement. Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, village board members. My name is Dr. Johnny Johnson. I live in Chiefland, Florida. I am speaking on behalf of continuation of fluoridation. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. You have heard a lot about IQ and fluoridated water in the news and through local people in the state who go around to work to get cities to stop it. I would like to say that those studies are done in Canada. And frankly, the studies are of poor quality. The lead researcher on those studies last was in 2019. First one was published in the Journal of American Medical Association Pediatrics. She was going around saying that pregnant mothers should not drink fluoridated water because it causes an IQ drop of four to five points in their children. Just last week, she changed her, her position 180 degrees. Her name is Christine Till. She said that there's not enough evidence of a link at lower fluoride levels like those recommended for the US and Canada. We don't have as many studies in that area. We need more studies and to replicate it, Till said. So in other words, there's no longer in her mind, any reason for pregnant mothers not to drink fluoridation. You're not creating dumb babies. There are outstanding studies from around the world, Australia, Denmark, New Zealand, Spain, Sweden and others that show absolutely no, no association with IQ drops of any sort. We have to go with the consensus of science. Second, you have maybe have heard about the court case against the EPA. There are those that would like to tell you that it has, has, it's going to stop water fluoridation. Well, this is what the court case did. The judge did not order fluoridation to be stopped. He ordered the, instructed the EPA to go and do a evaluation or to do something, except they cannot ignore that he said to go do something. They can still appeal that. He used the NTP, National Toxicology Report, which you'll hear about 120 times in his decision. Yet he ignored the key point that the next, that NTP report said it was not about water fluoridation or any fluoride level below 1.5 parts per million. That's twice what you have in your water. Lastly, I want to mention the Cochrane Report. You'll hear about this report from England. I know the authors. I met them in 2015 and have kept in communications with them. They do a type of study that is not study, say, study that is done any longer. It's something they have to do because of their their group. It's they're required to do it. What they looked at and they said they would do this for us because they know you make decisions based on what studies called contemporary studies. Now, common day studies now show. And what they said was Anne Marie Glenn, he said that contemporary studies show that fluoridation is effective, is effective. Secondly, where fluoridation is in place, don't stop it. You don't need to. And thirdly, it is cost effective. I ask that you keep fluoridation in your community, please, for the health of everyone, including me, who has gum recession and root showing and as adults, older adults especially, we get a lot of cavities.
Johnny, excuse me, your time has expired.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And should you wish, you can send your statement in writing to us as well. All right. The next speaker we have is Dr. Russell Dunkle. He's also on Zoom.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for allowing me to speak. Dr. Russ Dunkle, I'm the state dental director and chief dental officer of the state of Wisconsin. Dr. Johnson has just gone over for the reports and studies that have come out, the NTP report, the from the National Toxicology Program, the EPA ruling, et cetera. One of the things I want to point out is I have been a dentist for over 43 years. I have been in clinical, I've been in clinical practice for approximately 37, 38 years, working in every clinical setting in the state that you can possibly think of, including the treatment of special needs patients, both in clinic and in the operating room. And I can tell you, I have seen the ravages of dental decay. One of the things that you'll hear again is about the EPA ruling and the toxicology report. One of the things that is key to think in these EPA reports is they mention that fluoride crosses the blood brain barrier. We're aware of that. But what never has been researched thoroughly or proven, only as a hypothesis, is what is the pathophysicologic mechanism by how this is supposedly affecting IQ? The other thing is then they switch to with the thyroid gland. Again, hypothoth, they hypothesized that the thyroid disruption may be the mechanism by which fluoride impacts cognitive function. Key words to remember, hypothesize and maybe. Basically, what that says is it's not conclusive and it hasn't been proven it's suggested. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, the NTP report went into the studies of 1.5 or greater. They addressed nothing at the level of 0.7, which is what we are currently recommending by following the US Public Health Service, the CDC and the EPA, et cetera. Those are things to consider when you're looking at removing the fluoride, is that we have to look at all the science, not just cherry pick certain ones and ignore the other ones. You'd need to look at the entire science. I want to emphasize that my colleagues and I, both at DHS, nationally and globally, will continue to review all peer reviewed scientific research on the subject as it becomes available. And if credible research becomes available that provides new guidance on data and supports a change in our current policies and recommendations, then we will endorse those new directions in order to serve in the public's best interest. The key to remember is both yourself, your water operator, the person from the public health department that's going to speak and myself, we all have skin in the game. No matter what is decided, and I'm only here to educate and inform, we're the ones that that when things develop or things change, we're the ones that are going to be responsible for correcting those decisions. So I ask you just to carefully make your decision on all the science, not just part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dunkle. All right. Stephanie Goldfinch? Please come to the table. You'll need to turn the mic on and when you see the green light, you'll know it's on, so.
Are we good? Hello? Hi, I am Dr. Stephanie Goldfinch and I am a practicing general dentist in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. I wanted to share a little bit of information. I certainly don't speak nationally about fluoridation, but I practice nearby and see a lot of adults and children in the local community. So in toxicology, there's a really popular phrase that is the dose makes the poison. And the idea is that things that are beneficial to us in small or moderate quantities can be really dangerous to us in large quantities. The classic example is water poisoning. You can drink so much water that you damage your kidneys and even die. That doesn't mean we should stop drinking water. Fluoride is in the same vein here. Small and moderate amounts of fluoride, such as the recommended water fluoridation levels that we're currently fluoridating our public water to, are beneficial for the dental health of children and adults. The studies cited in Greg and Judd's proposal The studies cited in Greg and Judd's proposal that I read were about fluoridating over twice the level that we are currently fluoridating and over twice the level that is recommended by all dental organizations, including the ADA and the AAPD for pediatric dentistry. Safe limits have been established for fluoride consumption. And that safe limit is 0.7 parts per million, 0.7 milligrams of fluoride per liter of water. Judd and Greg cited three sources in their proposal. Two of them were the same source, the first and the third. And so I'd like to directly quote from their source. The NTP monograph concluded that higher levels of fluoride exposure, such as drinking water containing more than 1.5 milligrams of fluoride per liter, are associated with lower IQ in children. So again, that source that they're citing is about fluoridation levels greater than twice the recommended fluoridation levels and greater than twice what we're currently doing. I'd also like to cite that the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry has shown in their studies and their statements for the public that the optimal, sorry, the optimally fluoridated public water level of 0.7 milligrams per liter at least with 35% reduction in cavities in primary teeth, which are baby teeth that children have, and a 20, and a 26% reduction in permanent teeth with cavities. And so I certainly understand that the villages could save money by not buying fluoride to put in their fluoride, to put in the fluoridated water. But I think saving money there passes that cost on to the residents of DeForest in the form of increased dental costs. Increasing the number of cavities in our children by near over 30%, and the number of cavities in our adults by over 25%, is spending more money in the dental chairs and more pain in dental offices for the residents of DeForest. And so I hope we consider keeping optimally fluoridated water. Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am? I just have one question. Yeah, it's on the agenda, so we get to ask one follow up question.
Please, I would love questions.
I was just wondering, thank you, by the way.
Yeah.
It's not easy to do what you just did.
I'm not a great public speaker, but I really appreciate it.
So if you, if you're thinking about the safety factor, which you were talking about, if we think about 1.5 milligrams per liter, okay, which is basically double what, what they're recommending, which is 0.7. If that's harmful, can you explain the safety factor or the uncertainty factor? Typically, EPA sets a factor of 10, making 0.15 milligrams per liter the safe level. Drinking two liters of water at 0.7 milligrams a liter kind of equals 1.4 grams or milligrams per day. And so could you kind of expand just a little bit? You have like about a minute to do that, sorry. It's a, it's a loaded question.
Okay. So I admittedly am not doing calculations about volume and but I did have, I, I sent these sources to, I believe her name was Roonisha, in writing. The Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health has a really helpful webpage and they cite, I'm so sorry, I'm scrolling on my phone as we speak. The upper limit, so the upper tolerable intake level for all adults as 10 milligrams daily. So I certainly am not looking at the exact study that the EPA is citing. We could into that into the record, and I'd love to take a look. But what the Harvard School of Public Health is citing, you have to consume a very, very large amount of water to hit that in a given day.
What about a baby, an infant that's on, I'm sorry?
Sure, yeah. So it is safe to use fluoridated water when preparing formula bottles for babies. And in addition, when a child is in utero, is when their baby teeth start developing in their jaw, they're not able to apply toothpaste on, you know, the developing fetus. And so you need the mother to be drinking fluoridated water for the fluoride to be incorporated into the dental structure. It's incorporated into the enamel of the teeth. And similarly, when a child is aged zero to eight is when their adult teeth are developing. And so you want the child to be drinking fluoridated water in that time for the fluoride to be incorporated into the enamel of their adult teeth. So that's a benefit that you get of systemic fluoride that you don't get just from using fluoridated toothpaste.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. I'm not sure that's, it's, it's not what we have been doing. We'll verify that. We're going to pull up the policy. Okay. Okay, is he wanting to speak?
Yes, I have a public hearing.
Notice on him.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, we will call on him when we get there. All right, we have Chris McDonald from, is he here? All right, Chris, please come forward.
Can you hear me? Good, good afternoon or good evening. My name is Chris McDonald. I live at 4,000 Longfellow Court in the Village of Windsor. I had the opportunity to talk at the Public Services Committee last night, and I made the point, Village of Windsor, why the heck am I at the Village of DeForest talking to the board? My family lives in the Village of Windsor, but I can stand on my front porch, throw a rock, and hit the Village of DeForest. We live in this community. We frequent the library. We frequent the parks. We work in this community. My family and I have got two small girls, age three and five. And my girls also go to school at the DeForest Area School District. So they stand to be impacted by whatever decision the board or public service committee stands to make here today. So I'm just here to register my request that the Public Services Committee and the board both wait before they make a decision on the discontinuation of fluoridated water until we have more information. There is a lot of information out there on this topic, and I think it's important to read all the science and especially what studies recommend and what they don't conclude. And what they're not concluding today is that amounts below 1.5 milligrams per liter, at least that I've seen, are unsafe for children. So my kids drink the water. I just filled up my kid's water bottle in the hall here. I have no concerns about my children consuming fluoride. However, I do have concerns if they were to discontinue use in the schools. I live in the Village of Windsor. We're on a well. I do not have fluoridated water. And so I made the point last night that when I relocated to the Village of Windsor, I had a conversation with my dentist concerned about their oral health and how are they going to get enough fluoride to ensure that they have good teeth development? And his point was if they go to daycare in the village, which they do, and they go to school in the village, which they do, that they'll get enough fluoride to ensure that they have proper dental health. There are some additional points made about costs. I'd like to understand maybe the cost to the village, especially as it's spread out across all population. Cost is important. We have to consider that. And then also safety. I'd like to understand that a little bit more. In my line of work, we're pretty uncompromising on safety. So I'm very empathetic to that concern. And if there is a safety concern to the workers of the village, we need to have that conversation and address it. But I don't think we have the information today to make the decision to discontinue the use of fluoride. So I'd ask the board to request more information from experts.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Eric, to do it, do it? Tietz.
Hi, I'm here. I live in 5653 Ashburn Lane in Fitchburg. And you might think, why am I here? I'm a pediatric dentist, and we have four offices throughout this city area of Madison, in the Sun Prairie, in the east side, the west side, and the south side. I have nine dentists, pediatric dentists that I work with. We take care of a large amount of Medicaid children that get care and they require care. We're in the hospital like Dr. Dunkel talked about. We see a lot of decay, a lot of infections, taking out infected teeth left and right. And I don't want to speak to the science. I want to speak to the common sense. And the common sense tells me, after 35 years of practicing dentistry, pediatric dentistry, that I would like to see the fluoride stay in the communities around Madison. I don't need more money. I don't need to see more kids with decay. I think the science is out there. Frankly, I think there's a lot of internet science out there that we all base our decisions on. And I think we look, have to look at real science. And I'm here just to support fluoride staying in the water. And I don't want to, I don't want to take care, take more teeth out and hamstring these poor kids, especially a lot of the Medicaid kids. They don't get into a lot of dentists. And we need to provide services and anything that we can help them to keep them from getting dental disease. It's the largest disease amongst children out there. This is, I know there's a cost, like they addressed. And I think it's real important that we continue that. And I came here, I just found out about this meeting four, three hours ago, and I drove out here to support this. So I hope you guys continue the fluoride in that. The water, I think it's very important. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have Sheila Howe next.
Hello, I live at 324 Market Street, DeForest, and I want to support taking it out of our water system. I think it's interesting. We have all these people from outside the community. We've had fluoride in our water since the 40s, and we still have problems with cavities. And how do we even know what would happen if it's taken out? Let's, I mean, how would we even know if we don't try it? I would like the choice to have fluoride or not. We can go buy water that has it in it. Right now, I don't even drink water out of the faucet. And I think most people don't. It smells like chlorine. We buy our water from the store or we filter it. But fluoride gets in through your skin. Everything that's in our water gets in through our skin. And right now, we're dealing with chemicals in our foods, you know, lead paint or lead in our pipes. Why not take out one of these items? I understand it's a big cost. It's very dangerous for the people putting the fluoride into the water system. They have to wear suits. It's bad. It's corrosive. So that's where I stand on it. I have emailed everybody about it. If you want fluoride, I, I think, you know, there is water. You can brush your teeth more. There are warnings on your toothbrush or your toothpaste label. You know, if you take too much of it, how do we know we're not getting too much? I think that's really important. If it's in certain foods, too. So I think it's a really good idea financially and for the health of the community. And, you know, there's all these different sciences, science changes every day. So as we learn new things, we should be flexible and embrace change once in a while. See what happens.
Thank you, Sheila. Abby Lowry on fluoride.
Hi, thank you. My name is Abby Lowry, and I live at 609 Greenfield Drive here in DeForest. I am speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of DeForest, a mom of two kids, and I also have a close relative who has cognitive disability. I'm speaking on regarding the agenda item 8.1 relating to fluoride. I am concerned about this agenda item for several reasons. One, this has never been discussed before at the Public Services Committee or Village Board level. This proposal is new to you. I'm afraid that since this proposal relates to the village budget, which is scheduled to be voted on tonight, this agenda item will not get the consideration and time it needs. I do not want you to be rushed. I want you to have all the information you need and time to think and discuss. Two, local dentists and public health experts, with the exception of public appearances tonight, have not been consulted by village staff. Thus, you do not have access to their professional opinions. The village, particularly the Public Services Department, seeks professional opinion on almost everything they do, from the functioning of our water wells to whether to add stop signs at intersections. I think it is concerning that the board is expected to make a decision about this important issue without any expert opinions. Today, I talked briefly to dentists at Fisher Family Dental and DeForest Dental Services right here in DeForest. Both dentists shared their support of continuing to add fluoride to our water supply. Dr. Fisher pointed out that applying fluoride directly to the teeth is not as effective or as easy to obtain as having fluoride in the drinking water. She pointed out that fluoride in drinking water is responsible for a drastic decrease in childhood cavities, which means better dental health, less mouth pain, and ability to focus on schoolwork. She is willing to provide additional information to the board as needed. Number three, no information was shared in the memo about the big impact public water fluoridation has had in our country. A recently reviewed article as of September 2024 from the National Institute of Dental and Cranial Facial Research stated, quote, fluoride continues to be dental science's main weapon in the battle against tooth decay, unquote. They also went on to state that it is, quote, "no less than a remarkable feat of science, an achievement ranking with the other great preventative health measures of our century." Obviously, there are huge proven benefits to adding fluoride to our public drinking water. This should not be discounted and should be part of any discussion to stop adding it to our water supply. Public health professionals' opinions would help us tease out if there is legitimate concern with fluoride and how this interacts with the proven benefits. I'd also state that if you decide to, if you do decide to remove fluoride from the water supply, please use the money that you would otherwise use for the fluoride chemical and the fluoride pumps to pay for topical fluoride treatments for every single child in this village whose families want it at a frequency and dose prescribed by local dentists. In conclusion, I ask this committee to not vote to approve this proposal tonight. You do not have the information or time you need to make such a big decision.
Thank you, Abby. All right, Brenda, and then we'll take Chris Kramer. Brenda Stoudamire?
Yes, Brenda Stoudamire, 1278 Dodie Street, Green Bay. Good evening, my name is Brenda Stoudamire, Wisconsin mom who spent seven years suing the EPA over fluoride's neurotoxicity. Judge Edward Chen ruled in September that fluoride at 0.7 milligrams per liter poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children. This conclusion is backed by credible scientific evidence, yet public health agencies are gaslighting us into believing fluoride is safe, effective, equitable, and cost-saving. Wisconsin DHS and Dane County Public Health claim there's no evidence of harm at current fluoride levels, but they don't even track our kids' fluoride levels in the body. They equate naturally occurring calcium fluoride with industrial florsolic acid, an unregulated waste product of fertilizer and aluminum manufacturing that contains lead and arsenic. These agencies manipulate public perception, ignoring mounting evidence of fluoride's risks while clinging to outdated endorsements from entrenched organizations like CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, the Wisconsin Dental Association, and the American Dental Association. Fluoride disproportionately harms our most vulnerable populations. Formula-fed infants in fluoridated communities consume up to 70 times more fluoride than breastfed babies, leaving them at a greater risk of brain and developmental harm. The first U.S. neurobehavioral study out of California was published this spring. It found children exposed to more fluoride had more problems with emotional reactivity, complaints such as headaches and stomach aches, anxiety and symptoms linked to autism. Tooth decay, the leading chronic disease in children and adults with 79 years of fluoridation, isn't caused by a lack of fluoride. It's driven by excessive sugar and carb intake. The school breakfast program provides children with up to 80 grams of sugar daily, far above the recommended 25 grams. Meanwhile, the 20-year-old talking point that fluoride reduces tooth decay by 25% has recently been deflated has recently been deflated to three percent or less by Cochrane, the recent Lotus and Catfish studies as well. In twenty twenty, the U.S. Surgeon General declined to endorse fluoridation, citing evidence from the NTP that finds fluoride lowers IQ. Dr. Linda Bernbaum, former NIEHS director, stated fluoride's benefits are topical. We should not expose fetuses and infants to something that can harm their brains. Our lawsuit revealed that no federal agency or fluoride industry representative could produce a single study providing fluoride's safety to the brain. Public health officials are gaslighting us to protect fluoride's reputation, not public health. It's time to prioritize science, transparency, and individual choice. I urge you to end fluoridation in DeForest.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I can't believe I got through all that.
One question. Can you expand just a little bit about that, the safety with the brain? And the infants? You said something about they couldn't provide a single study?
Okay.
Providing, saying that it was safe?
So we, we deposed EPA, CDC, FDA, the chemical companies that provide fluoride. I think that's what you're talking about. And they couldn't, they couldn't provide any safety studies. I know some people have said there's all these safety studies showing it's safe. Some study from Denmark and whatever. EPA couldn't even use any of those studies in, in our litigation to defend themselves. When we deposed EPA and so we had two, a few different times that we went to court. In twenty twenty, we went to court, and then again in twenty twenty-four. And in twenty twenty, EPA couldn't put any of their experts on the stand because every one of them said that fluoride is neurotoxic to the brain. And so they had to hire experts from Exponent, which is a science for hire company. That's a tobacco and chemical companies hire from. So there is no safety study showing that fluoride, ingesting fluoride is safe for the fetus or, or a bottle-fed infant. And it doesn't work by incorporating your teeth. CDC was deposed on that, and they said, no, fluoride works topically.
Excuse me, you're one extra minute, Izza. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Chris Kramer.
Yeah, hello.
Hammer, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's fine. Uh, hi, I'm, I similarly found out about this meeting just a couple of hours ago. I have not prepared a statement. I would love to prepare a statement. I did write an article about fluoride for a national dental publication.
Mr. Kramer, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sorry, yeah, sure. I'm Dr. Chris Cammer. I'm a dentist in Madison, Wisconsin. My home address is, is forty-eight oh nine Sherwood Road in Madison. Okay?
Thank you. Please continue.
Yeah. So I just found out about this meeting, but, and I, I sent a link to an article that I wrote because I'd understand that fluoride is controversial. I'm a dentist that if it's possible, I'm kind of in the middle of this. I see both sides. And, and if I had a baby and I was concerned about it, the baby possibly consuming fluoride in water that might, and I'm just saying might, uh, cause a decrease in that child's IQ. Man, I would probably be very concerned about steering clear of that. However, I also want to acknowledge that fluoride, and as, as the last speaker mentioned, topic, you know, shows a topical benefit, absolutely. I have, um, I have done a study and mission work in Bolivia where we treated two hundred kids with rampant decay. I mean, decay all over the place. And we used a topical fluoride solution to halt the decay. And my favorite example was a seven-year-old child with twenty-seven areas of active decay. And after a couple of applications of fluoride, um, we halted all those areas of decay. Now, when you say fluoride is still, this is a topical fluoride that, and it's called silver diamine fluoride. And it, and every study has shown that it does not, it is not taken up systemically. So just like it was mentioned by the previous speaker, that the fluoride, the topical benefit of fluoride is unquestionable. I'm in that camp. Got to have fluoride, but maybe you don't have to have it every single day. And, 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 and if you're looking at twenty-five percent reduction in decay, well, we got darn near a hundred percent reduction in decay with a topical application that was not taken up systemically. And we did that in Bolivia, and that study will be released within a month or two. Sometimes freedom means freedom from something that you put in my water that I didn't ask for. I, I'm just, I'm not saying that, that speaks to some people. That's very important to some people. And I, I'm concerned that even though there's a small or what's considered a safe amount of fluoride in the water, they're getting fluoride from other sources, from toothpaste, from your food in the grocery store. You're going to get fluoride. So are we putting it anybody at risk where they're at that certain one point five part per million level where there might be a cognitive, an irreversible cognitive defect to someone's brain? Well, we have the answer, and I think it'll serve both sides. And I say it's, if you, if you decide, like Marshall did, I believe, to remove the fluoride from their water, if, if you all decide to take it out, then I'm all for what Abby said. Let's use that money to give kids the fluoride that, that want it and do it in a topical way that's not taken up systemically. Do it twice a year and not worry about having them drink it every single day. If that's what you decide, like I said, I'm in the middle of this.
Okay, thank you, Chris. All right, I, is there anyone else who wish to address this on the fluoride issue? And because we, we do, we, you can ask one question, and I did check. Does anybody want to ask any questions? No, we're a quiet bunch tonight. We're contemplative. I would also note that if any of you want to send a statement in, we will consider those. We got a lot of emails today and a lot of information sent to us. So we do have those. So if you're one of those who sent a statement, thank you. And we'll be able to, to have read or read those. All right. Yes, Jim.
I just wanted to state that I'm also the chair of the Public Service Committee. And seeing that we're forty-four minutes into this meeting, I'm gonna ask that we send an email to the, this Public Service Committee members and offer that they watch this because it's been a lot of very helpful things. And so mainly so everybody doesn't have to repeat themselves at the next meetings.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, we're still in public appearances, and we're going to open the public hearing on the budget. So you're all welcome to stay and play budget for a while. What? Did, did we miss something? Okay. Oh, okay. So with that, I would move to open the public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-five operational budget. And I would ask if there are any people here to address the budget issue. Abby.
Thanks for letting me speak again. I just thought if I was already here and I had an opinion on the budget, I might as well share. My name is Abby Lowry. I live at six oh nine Greenfield Drive to Forest. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of the forest. I want to share a budget priority of mine that I hope is part of this drafted budget document as well as its day-to-day implementation. With a new president about to take office in January, who has repeatedly shared that he plans to engage in mass deportation of immigrants and may utilize local police to do so, I went to share that I am against our police department's time, money, or expertise being used to find otherwise law-abiding undocumented or documented immigrants in our community or remove them from our community. There are immigrants who live in my neighborhood, and I do want them, I do not want them to be unfairly targeted. I strongly feel as well that local money should be used for local issues. I do not want our local law enforcement distracted by federal issues that have little to no impact or relation to everyday crimes and crime prevention that is important to our community. I know our police department strongly adheres to the community policing model of having a good, trusting relationship with the community. And I've seen them do a lot of great things in our community. This would be severely jeopardized or impossible if our local police officers have to be involved in finding or removing immigrants from our community. As stated in the National Policing Institute's report, "The Role of Local Police Striking a Balance Between Immigration Enforcement and Civil Liberties", quote, "The reluctance of local police to enforce immigration law grows out of the difficulty of balancing federal and local interests in ways that do not diminish the ability of the police to provide for public safety, which depends heavily on public trust. In communities where people fear the police, very little information is shared with officers, undermining the police capacity for crime control and quality surface delivery. As a result, these areas become breeding grounds for drug trafficking, human smuggling, terrorist activity, and other serious crimes. As a police chief and one of the focus groups asked, quote, "How do you police a community that will not talk to you?" I also want to share that I really appreciate just over the years and also with this budget, time and money put into our parks, trails, and community events. It adds a lot to my life and my family's life, and just feels really good to engage in them in the community. So please keep that in mind and my priority in mind in the preparation, execution of this budget document. I'd really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Abby. All right. We will, we will then ask, I want to ask, do you want to say something now or during your item on the agenda? All right. If there's no one else to speak to the budget online or in the audience, I will close the public hearing at six forty-eight P.M. Thank you. Item seven, presentation by Renisha Strozier, Public Health Madison and Dane County regarding the addition of fluoride to drinking water. Renisha?
Hi, can you all see me, hear me?
Yes.
I might need to just switch some cameras around so I can be looking at you personally. Maybe that works. Nope.
Well, we can see you. Can you see your presentation on the?
Yes, I can see my presentation on the screen. Okay, that's better. You can see my face now.
Okay, well, if you would introduce yourself and share with us your presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. First of all, I want to say thank you very, very, very much for making time for me to speak today. I am excited to speak before you. My name is Renisha Strozier. I am an environmental health services supervisor at Public Health Madison and Dane County. I supervise the Environmental Health Laboratory Unit and the Environmental Health Protection Unit. I am joined by my colleague Kat Grande. She is the data and epidemiologist team supervisor. And also joined by Dr. Russ Dunkel, who spoke earlier, and Dr. Johnny Johnson, who spoke earlier. So those three people will help me with the technical questions if there are any questions at the end of my presentation. And so the name of my presentation is Community Water Fluoridation: It's Safe, Effective, and Equitable. And next slide, please. So the background. Water utilities supplement their water to come up to point seven parts per million. Community water fluoridation is the process of adjusting fluoride levels in the public water supply to prevent dental cavities. The CDC states that for more than seventy-five years, community water fluoridation has been one of the most practical, cost-effective, fair, and equitable measures that communities can take to improve residents' oral health, and this has made substantial contributions to narrowing oral health disparities. Next slide, please. So how does it work? When communities fluoridate their water, it bathes the teeth in a low level of fluoride throughout the day. This helps strengthen a tooth's surface, making it more resistant to decay. Next slide, please. So this is a standard practice. We have been fluoridating water within the United States for over seventy-five years. Next slide, thank you. It is common and the norm. About ninety-nine percent of people in Dane County on public water have access to fluoridated public water systems. Thank you. And it protects children. According to the CDC, one in four children living below the federal poverty level have untreated tooth decay, which can lead to pain, school absences, difficulty concentrating, among other issues. Water fluoridation is an easy way to prevent this tooth decay, particularly among children who may not be able to see a dentist. Per the CDC's evidence, shows that water fluoridation prevents tooth decay by providing frequent and consistent contact with low levels of fluoride, ultimately reducing tooth decay by about twenty-five percent in children and adults. Next slide, please. Community water fluoridation equitably protects our oral health. Community water fluoridation equitably prevents cavities and promotes good oral health, regardless of age, race, ethnicity, education, income, insurance status, or access to dental care. Thank you. Nearly all public health dental and medical organizations support community water fluoridation, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Dental Association, the Centers for Disease Control, the United States Public Health Service, the American Public Health Association, the National Institutes of Health, and the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. There are many more organizations that support fluoridating water, and they are not listed on this slide. Next slide, please. Safe Levels. There is no evidence that the current level of community water fluoridation in DeForest harms health. The amount of fluoride added to the community water supply is extremely small. The levels discussed in recent reports and litigation are more than double the current levels used in community water fluoridation. Organizations such as the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics, and the American Dental Association have written statements in twenty twenty-four that continue to support community water fluoridation. Thank you. It's cost-effective intervention that reduces healthcare costs. As a community, we work to pay for those that have little to no access to dental care. For every one dollar invested in community water fluoridation, communities save twenty dollars in healthcare costs. On average, communities with water fluoridation experience twenty-five percent fewer cavities, saving thirty-two dollars per person annually by avoiding dental treatment costs and leading to fewer missed work and school days. A fact sheet with this information was submitted along with the PowerPoint to describe how this impacts DeForest specifically. And what is our role? We follow the recommendations set by the national experts like the Centers for Disease Control and the Environmental Protection Agency. We are not in a position to conduct our own research on this population-level topic. We will monitor the national recommendations and will communicate changes promptly. We will engage with the water utility in the event that a recommendation has changed. We will continue to acknowledge the concerns people are bringing forth, and we will recognize and acknowledge that people may make different decisions regarding fluoridated water. Next slide, please. So now I just want to open up the floor to questions. There was a question about infant formula. I know that Dr. Johnson and Dr. Russ Dunkel are ready to answer that question if it can be repeated. If not, please send an email to me, and I'm able and willing to get answers back to you. Thank you for your time.
Rebecca, then Jim.
Yeah, that, that question was from me. I had asked a question related to concentrations of fluoride around that point seven milligram liter. But how do we know what dose a child, especially a child, an infant that's being bottle-fed, how do we know that they're not getting overfluoridated? Which does, which has been shown to cause problems. And does the Dane County Public Health or Wisconsin DHS monitor the level of fluoride in the bodies of our little kiddos? Because this is kind of important because we do know that there are some known IQ issues when children, especially as they're developing, when they get overfluoridated. Thank you.
Johnny, you want to go ahead and answer that?
Yeah, I'll answer first. First thing I'm just going to say is no, we do not monitor that. Yeah, they can go ahead.
Okay, this is Johnny Johnson.
Okay, yeah, this is Johnny Johnson. I'd be happy to answer that. I did my research in infant formula and fluoride content back in my residency and master's work in nineteen eighty-three, eighty-five. There is no documented harm, none of babies getting fluoridated water and mixing it with infant formula. That has never been suggested by any group that that be avoided. The issue is, is that babies drink a smaller quantity of water. They don't drink one to two gallons of water. When we talk about the one-point-five part per million out of the National Toxicology Program, that's a level that they were looking at from other countries, not in the United States. They're looking at foreign studies where it is at multiples, two, four, six, eight, ten, fifteen times what we have in the water here. They see IQ issues at seven to eight to ten times what we have in our water, not at one-point-five parts per million. That's not happening. We never see that. That, we actually discovered fluoridation because that fluoride actually occurred and occurs in our water. And it had, in Colorado Springs, nineteen oh-one, there were brown stains on children's teeth. They had two to twelve parts per million of fluoride in the water. That's how we discovered the fluoride benefits of teeth because they had no cavities. So we know that there are no third eyes, heads on backwards, people stupid. All the people that live in areas in this country that have levels up to the EPA's maximum of four points per, four parts per million, they do not have any health effects. That's been studied over and over in the EPA continuously. Every three to six years repeats that. There, there is no science showing that babies get hurt by it. Ever my, my grandchildren, I would not allow it. If they, I thought third for a second that they would do that. Does that hope that helps answer the question?
Thank you.
Somewhat, um, I guess, I guess my question, I, I mean, just because a study was done in a different country doesn't mean our kids here are not being affected. Um, I know someone I had asked earlier had, I asked, or actually, I think I asked her a moment ago, if we even studied uh, how much kids have fluoride in their bodies. And we're not, we're not monitoring that. So how do we know? Um, and that's a real concern of mine because, I mean, there, I've been studying this for quite some time now. And um, I was interested when it came up on our agenda. And it, this is a good discussion, so I'm appreciating the, the conversation back and forth. Um, we want to protect our kids, but we also want to make sure that they're getting the proper fluoride that they should be getting without over-fluoridite, fluoridating them. So um, there are some neurotoxic effects that we do know about. There's recent lawsuits that have been, that have shown that this is a, a real issue. There's lower IQs that have been documented. There's a greater risk of ADHD. And there's lower non-verbal intelligence scores for, for formula-fed kids be, who are using this fluoridated water. So, I mean, there's issues that we need to, to consider, and I'm more on the side of being safe than sorry. And, you know, it is my body, it's my children's body, and why should they be forced to, to ingest something that they may or may not want?
Thank, thank you. We're going to keep moving here to other people. Jim? And then Colleen.
I wanted to question a, a stat that was put up on the screen. I think it was ninety-eight point eight. It was a few slides ago, and I, I think you had it as, yeah, of people in Dane County on public. Okay, so I think maybe I see what, because to me, that was a little bit um, misleading, I'll say, because to me, ninety-eight point eight seemed high. Just knowing how many people live in rural Dane County on well waters, I was reading that as an entire population of Dane County. Now that I'm able to resee it and please verify this for me. It's people that are on, say, I'll say, city water, not necessarily the rural population of Dane County. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So along the same lines, can you tell me what communities don't? It seems like we must be only talking about maybe one or two communities that are not fluoridating their water.
To my knowledge, the only community in Dane County that is not fluoridating their warty, warty, excuse me, water is the Village of Marshall.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen?
I was just wondering if anyone could uh, point me to the study that shows the relation between uh, fluoride and neurotoxicity in children because I've got hours and hours into a number of different studies, and I haven't seen any definitive proof.
I would be happy to send that to you. That was the, yeah, study in Canada and the series of studies that I was speaking to that the uh, head researcher at the time in twenty-nineteen, Christine Till, was saying that their study showed IQ deficits of up to five points when they, the pregnant mothers were drinking fluoridated waters and the IQ was tested in the children at ages three to four. They did not do this study. They got urine from a dat- a biobank in Canada, so they were analyzing it. That Dr. Till was, last week reversed her, reversed positions, and she said, "We don't know. We don't have enough data on uh, uh, at levels below zero point, at levels below one point, one point five, and at point seven parts per million that's used in the U S and Canada." In other words, she's saying her study is not showing that. When before, she was telling pregnant mothers on television and then in news reports, and even in Green Bay, she was in that, when Green Bay was hearing this same thing, she testified by, by writing an email to Green Bay that they should not do it because it's causing the babies of these mothers to be stupider, basically. And now she's reversed her position entirely. So that, those are the studies that they talked about. There's no other studies that show that IQ is affected by water fluoridation. And even up to four parts per million, what the EPA standard is. The last time that it was looked, researched and looked at for three and a half years by a dozen researchers altogether, they found that the only thing below uh, four parts per million that was a health issue was severe dental fluoresces, which is stained brown teeth. There were no bone fractures, there were no IQ issues, there were no reproductive issues. All of these things we're talking about don't happen in this country. People in West Texas have high levels, up to eight parts per million, and they'll drink it. They're not supposed to. We, they tell them not to, but it's, they're not dumb. I mean, look at all of us that have had it. We're not dumb people. And we wouldn't do something to our babies that was going to dumb them down if the, if the, if the literature showed that. We're scientists too, and this is not something that we scoff, that we just slough off. We look at the entire body. That's the most important thing to us, not just teeth. I'll send that to you. Yes, ma'am.
I did not see anything uh, about that particular doctor and um, changing. I didn't see anything that indicated there was a connection. Um, and I was just asking if anybody can prove these facts. But I would love to see that study where she recanted her earlier conclusions.
Absolutely, we'll send that to you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I can expand on Johnny's comment. The N T P report twice was reviewed by another federal agency called the National Association of Science, Engineering, and Medicine. And this particular report that Dr. Johnson was referring to, they had several concerns or what they call confounders with their analysis. One of them is the fact that they were using spot urinalysis. And the general scientific consensus is that using spot urinalysis is not a valid biomarker for treating or learning about fluoride exposure because of the half-life of fluoride, how it's disseminated, how rapidly it's disseminated. So again, the science has to be looked at very critically when doing this. And another thing that many times is done that we need to be very careful of in science is that we can't make the leap from association to causation or correlation to causation. Perfect example of that is I could tell you that, okay, we recently unfortunately had four people drown in Lake Monona, and they were cigarette smokers. Well, they were saying, well, that was the reason they drowned because they were cigarette smokers. That's the example of association to causation. You really can't make that leap in science.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dunkel. Okay, um, any other questions, Bill?
Yeah, one of your speakers talked about these Canadian or whatever studies. Are any of you familiar with the University of Iowa study?
Yes.
Yep.
That's in America, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And what, what's your synopsis on the Iowa study? I know it's a little older, but.
No, it's Iowa study. I'm sorry, this is Dr. Johnson again. Iowa study is still ongoing, and what they're looking at, wh- when you hear that fluoride doesn't help the teeth or get into the teeth before they erupt, one of the things that we saw back in nineteen oh-one, and one of the things that tells us that it does get into the teeth, is you can see if you get high levels way beyond fluoridation levels, actually three times what you have in the water, you'll see some brown stains starting to show up. Well, they actually studied this, and they're continuing to study for the cavity reductions. They take male clippings, they take hair samples, um, uh, some other, some other tissue that they look at to measure how much fluoride that are in kids and how much they're getting. They, they recruit these, these babies in the hospital, and they follow them for years and years and years. So the fluoride study that they do, IQ is not a part of their study. It's on uh, the, the decay of teeth and how beneficial fluoride is, what levels are beneficial, what do you, what is the minimum amount you need to get, to get cab, maximum cavity reductions? And that's how we arrived at the level that we're at now. It used to be a range, and depending on the temperature of, of the, where you were in the United States, but now we have air conditioning and heating everywhere. Babies or children are drinking the same amount of water, and it is basically to stop any sort of staining on the teeth. It's not health issues. There's no health issues with this. It is about potentially getting a stain that you might see on a child on their permanent teeth. So we stay at the maximum cavity level, the sweet spot with where the little white marks are called mild dental fluoresces may start to go up into a, a more color change. So that's the sweet spot. Because now we have A C, uh, and water intakes are the same for children all over the United States. And we have additional sources of fluoride in our diets, some swallowing of toothpaste. The teeth are the only bone in the body we can see, and we can manage how much fluoride that people are getting by these little colors that show up on their teeth. That's the safety point that we know. The EPA says it's four parts per million, which is six times what we put in the water. And at four parts per million, the concern is you can start, start to have what's called skeletal fluoresces, which is very common in India where people have bones that are, that just all deformed and they're crippled, crippled with it. They have eight, ten, fifteen times parts per million, I should say, in the water. We don't have that. That one-point-five that was stated by the N T P, they only had moderate confidence of the studies. And half of their studies were not on what's called PubMed, which is the National Library of Medicine. There's almost seven thousand studies on water fluoridation and papers on PubMed. If, many of the studies they used, a half of them were not on PubMed. It was, it's been highly criticized. I mean, who, we are worried about children as well. If there's an IQ problem potentially, good God, we'd say stop it. We can make more money, as the one pediatric dentist told you. We're the worst business in the world. We're advocating for less business. It is not a health issue.
And my dau- my daughter was uh, suffered from fluorosis as a young child. Um, warnings on toothpaste. I looked at my tooth, toothpaste. What's the, what's the toxic level? Because it says if your child swallows toothpaste, is it a glob or is it half a tube?
Actually, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is, is that, what's the level? And why would they have that on there if it was safe?
Because the FDA, over, an overabundance of caution does that on vitamins. They do it on toothpaste. They did that starting a few years ago. You, a four-year-old child would have to eat two adult-sized tubes of toothpaste at one sitting to die. What they tell you is you can call poison control if you think they've eaten more. I call poison control from time to time because we know in our offices, there was a type of fluoride in the past that was a foam, and kids would sometimes swallow it. And they would get an upset stomach when they got home. What they tell you is at the poison control center, the same thing we say, drink a glass of milk, the calcium will tie up that extra fluoride. Nobody has ever died in the United States over swallowing toothpaste. Well, I take that back. One person committed suicide several years ago by eating tubes of toothpaste, an adult. But you can, that is a, that is a statement that kind of emits a, oh my, uh, response, and it would be too. But there's a reason why it's on there. It's not on there in Europe. It's not on there in Germany. It's not on there in Mexico. The FDA has done that on over-the-counter products just as an abundance of caution. And say with a vitamin, like vitamin E or vitamin A, if you took a lot of it, yes, you could get a, a level of that where it would be toxic to you. But that's not the case with toothpaste. You'll get an upset stomach from the seding agent, that foaming agent that's in it, which is soap. You'll throw up before you can ever swallow enough of it to even cause any sort of harm.
Thank you.
On our screen, it says ninety-eight point eight percent of the drinking water in Dane County is fluoridated.
Right.
In Western Europe, ninety-seven percent isn't fluoridated. Why, why don't? In America, worldwide, five-point-seven percent of the population has fluoridated water. Why isn't that higher?
We have, well, it's the number of community water systems that we have in the U S that are fluoridated. It's almost seventy-three percent of the systems are fluoridated. And that's major, uh, major, major water system, that's small water systems like yours. The rest of the families, but twenty-five percent of them that are on community water systems are looking to do this. And there's new technology that's coming out that will allow them to feasibly do it with the monies they have and al- allow them to stop fluoridate, allow them to stop the cavities that they have. Now, the ninety-seven percent of Europe is not fluoridated, that doesn't have fluoridated water, to play on words. That is something that your opponents like to tell you, and here are the facts. There are millions and millions of people in Spain, in Brazil, and uh, and it's escaped in my, I apologize. Uh, millions of people get fluoridated water. Millions more gets fluoridated salt where fluoridated water isn't, isn't feasible. And that's typically because they don't have the infrastructure to distribute it. And um, the rest of some of these other countries will have fluoride intensity programs, of SWISH programs, of tooth brushing in school. They're all using fluoride. It's not like they're not. It's just because of issues that, well, some countries say, "We don't want it. We don't think it's right. We don't want to do it." Well, and that's a choice of theirs, but it's not that it's been banned. It is not that fluoridated water has been banned, instead of ninety-seven percent of the, of the country. It's growing. England just voted three years ago to have, it's a beautiful decision. Local communities will no longer have to make this decision. It's been taken to uh, the, the country level, and it's going to be made there, which is where it had to be approved anyhow. But now they're going to begin fluoridating like the United States has. It will be progressive. It will grow like it has up to where we are now. And it's just, it's just a play on words. I'm sorry to say, a lot, a lot of this is in, in this information that gets out there.
Oh, I didn't mean it was banned, but it was uh,
Right, right.
It's not, it's not, Ireland is one of the highest ones.
They're like us, yes, sir.
Nobody else. Eastern Europe doesn't even have probably half their people with water systems.
Right, it's not, it's not always feasible again because of infrastructure. Yeah, they have a lot of wells that have naturally, uh, the optimal levels naturally. They don't need to fluoridate. And they also, where it's not feasible, they'll use fluoridated milk and fluoridated salt, which are other delivery systems. They don't work as well as fluoridated water, but that is something that I'm, I, you didn't misspeak, and I apologize if I made it sound like that. No, sir, not at all. I'll send you on that as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to Rebecca.
Thanks, just a couple very quick questions. One, um, at what are, for the infants up through, from birth to six months, what is the recommended fluoride dosage?
You want me to take that, you guys?
I don't care who takes it.
Take it, Johnny. It's just on the NIH report.
Uh, well, it's recommended from zero to six months not to give uh, fluoride supplements to baby. If you're drinking uh, breast milk, you're almost getting You're almost getting none because uh, mother's breast milk does not contain fluoride. Um, that's just, that's just the way our, our bodies work. Starting at six months, you would begin to give a supplement if your water did not have the optimal amount of fluoride in it. If you had optimal fluoride like you all do and the baby's under six months of age. There's no problem at all with them drinking it or you mixing it with their infant formula. The only reason that it is says it's starting at six months is because we saw more of little white marks on the teeth in children over the last several years, a few decades. And so it moved from starting at two weeks of age. Then it moved to three months and now it's six months. And it's only just so that we keep little white marks on your teeth, which by, by, by the way, they fade off. Within three or four years after the permanent teeth coming in, you don't, you never see them. We see them in the office under a bright light when we dry the teeth off. But they fade away. They gone, they're gone. So that's the caution that we play as dentists. Maximum cavity reductions, no white marks that somebody might see on their teeth, and that's the bottom line. So you can definitely at six months, if there, if there's uh, breastfeeding, they would start on a supplement. Because they wouldn't be getting the water, tap water. If you're starting to mix tap water with their baby foods and concentrated formula. Then you would not give a supplement, only because they might show up with little white marks on their permanent teeth when they come in. Which is not entirely, people like white teeth.
So with the fact that uh, infants zero from birth to six months, it's not recommended that they have that they receive fluoride. Um, and with our lower-income communities, often not breastfeeding. But rather they're using infant formula.
Mm-hmm.
They are being exposed to fluoride at a very young age when they're not even supposed to be. And uh, this is a real concern. Um, and they're not ha- they're not being given the choice of whether or not to have this fluoride. My biggest concern is I'm very much a proponent of um, people having a choice. And this particular instance, they're not being given a choice. You get it or you don't. And nobody regulates how much these children or anybody is receiving other than, well, right now they're, it's right. The control is at zero point seven. As far as the um, that Christine Till that you were talking about earlier, that one study, the one you said that she reversed her statement. In fact, she really didn't reverse her statement. She said, we need to do some more studies to um, replicate because we don't have enough information for the lower amount. Not that it wasn't safe or that it was safe, just we don't have enough information and we need to make sure. So in that respect, it was not necessarily a reversal of what she was saying, but rather saying we need more information. And in that respect, I'm a proponent for being safe rather than sorry. So, thank you.
Well, this, this ac- actually, you can have fluoridated water starting at birth. It does not cause any harm. It's not a statement that they should not have it before six months. It is a statement that we recommend that because we're trying to uh, limit it little white marks on the permanent teeth in case that they might potentially have them. Those that are most, most at need get twice as many cavities as those that don't. By, by, by cutting them off, not giving them the choice to have fluoridated water to reduce their cavities greatly. And have to hot be, to go in the hospital, be under operating room and, and general anesthesia. Which is a huge issue when you don't have fluoridated water. We're removing their choice. Water operators, by fluoridating the water. Reduce hospitalizations for children with multiple cavities in their teeth by two-thirds. Two-thirds of these kids don't have to go to the operating room and be put under general aesthetic. Fluoridated water can be drunk from birth. There's no harm in it at all.
Okay.
If I can expand just a little bit, if, um, for a moment. A state dental director, I'm one of the few in the country that is the dental director of DHS, both in public health and in Medicaid. So I serve as the dental director in Medicaid as well. And I thoroughly understand your point regarding the fact of choice. However, what also happens is, is we're dealing with a severe access to care issue. I'm working diligently and people in Medicaid are working with me as well to try to change that access. And try to encourage more dental providers to become Medicaid providers and treat the individuals. But as the, at the individual grows, you're talking about age to six months. But then what happens for the people after that? Their choice, their choices, they can't get into the dentist. So they have no other access. So we're taking away their choice. Because that may be the only dental care they get preventative measure for several times. And I've seen it because I've been in it clinically where I've had patients that couldn't afford toothpaste in order to put food on the table. So when we're talking about balances, we have to look at both sides of the equation when we're doing this and look at all the populations and the people that don't have a voice later on as well. And, you know, I've seen the kids and special needs kids that I've had to put in the hospital that couldn't get in to see anybody for ten to twenty years. And fluor- and fluoride in water was literally their only access. So we need to consider that as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Colleen.
Yeah, I just one quick point. Um, I made it a point to contact a friend of mine who's in her thirties and has two small children under the age of four. I also made it a point to talk to my dentist, who is a female and has three children, I believe. Both of these ladies told me that their obstetricians never talked to them about fluoride or fluoride being dangerous or brought it up at all. Nor was it brought up um, when it came to feeding the infant once it was born. Just informational point.
Thank you, Colleen. All right, Jim.
I just wanna state, I guess it can be a question too if need be, but I'll state a bit of an opinion. That in part of my job is we create a document, we call it environmental document, but it's not necessarily about the environment as far as plans and things. But one of the aspects that we look at is what we term environmental justice. And how it, different things that we do, so this is highway building and how it impacts different populations. And that's, the truth is, I don't know how I'm gonna vote on this when eventually we get to the vote. But I'm gonna look at different topics and do a lot more reading on it. But one of the things I wanna look at, and I think you, I think it was Dr. Russell that just brought it up at the last time you sp- spoke. I think we might be it will, say, removing fluoride from the water might, I'll say, maybe unjustly. I don't really like using that word. But it will impact impoverished populations more than it will, say, people with more means. That is one thing that I'll consider. Um, and when we talk about safe. I think about like what's safe and I don't know exactly, again, I'll do more readings on how fluoride affects the bodies and the different speculations that we've heard tonight. But I also think of safe as far as quality of life. And sorry to, to talk about this as far as a pet, but I look at my dog knowing that I need to get his tartar cleaned and it's a three hundred dollar fee to put him under to have his teeth cleaned. And generally, say, pets tend to be a lot lower cost than I hear many doctors that have been here, how often you're dealing with somebody's teeth and stuff. So I, I hate to see that cost. Actually, I guess I've got to see some of that with a broken leg, but obviously not necessarily the same thing. In talking about choices. If, if people know that our water is fluoridated or fluorinated. Thank you, Colleen. But there is a choice too, and this is maybe the question I have. Is there's bottled water out there? I'm assuming some of those bottled water are also not, please, fluorinated.
Fluorinated.
So, but I just bring that up as we talk about there's choices. There is choices that if somebody i- is very particu- I shouldn't say very particular, but is concerned about this and they wanna mix their baby formula with water without fluoride. They have that option too. This, I just wanted to bring those points up as I'm listening to people, but again, I'm gonna do some research as we move forward.
From a, from a water safety standpoint, which the water, your water utility uh, binds by the EPA strict standards. Your water safety is much greater than bottled water, which is under FDA uh, purview. It's considered a food. Um, but the, the issue is, is that it is much more expensive to buy bottled water. The cheaper part is that people who don't wanna, and this has been tried in the course, there's been a hundred and eight litigations against fluoridation since it began. This was just a hundred and ninth, but uh, it, it water fluoridation is not considered illegal or taking away a, a personal choice. The easiest way to get fluoride out of your water, taking out ninety-six point five percent of it, is with the under sink reverse osmosis unit for about two hundred and fifty dollars. But it takes out a lot of other things, but it will take out the fluor- fluoride in your water. You already have it. I'm not as sure what percent uh, concentration it's adding your water naturally. But it will take it out, uh, that point seven will go down to, geez. Uh, three percent of point seven is point zero two one. It will take it down to an extremely low level. So that's the cheaper thing for people who don't want it. If you wanna buy a water filter support system for them or give them a tax, uh, tax credit or something, that would be a way to accommodate them. It is, it is environmentally unjust to take those that need it the most and not give it to them. That's a great point. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we're gonna move forward. We've got.
May I make one final statement? It's just, it's just information. I just wanna say my name again. My name is Ramesha Strozier and I wanna let you know that I'm available to the board. You can send questions to me. We will respond. We are not telling you what to do. We just wanna make sure that we provide you facts and information to help you make your decision. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you to the board. Appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna move to Judge, yes, Rebecca, what is?
One last thing. I appreciated what, can you re, I'm sorry, the, the lady in the black shirt and the blue pants. I, was your name Brenda? Okay. I would suggest because she has some pretty first, it sounds like some pretty firsthand knowledge about some of this stuff. It might be beneficial for, if this does go back to the committee, to maybe invite her to come and speak as well. Whatever, I'll let him talk with you on that. Just a suggestion.
I was just gonna say, it's a, it's a public forum, so I guess I don't know the date off the top of my head. And there is a meeting in December. I'd have to look at my calendar. Is it the third Monday, if I remember right? And it hasn't changed, I.
We meet December second, sixteen? Yeah, cause we'd need December thirty, right? So that'd be fourteen days later, seventeen minus one is sixteen.
Yeah, so December sixteenth at six, at this, this room. Yeah, I guess, reach out. Probably put you on the agenda. Yeah.
If he has, he's on the agenda as an item, but I'm not sure how that meeting's gonna be organized. So let's just talk about this offline.
Yeah, we'll talk about it offline.
We need to stay a little more relevant because we still have our whole budget to get through tonight. Um.
Thank you for that.
That's easy.
Yeah, well, when we can't send out tax bills, we'll hear about that. Um, okay, guys. We're gonna move on um, to item eight point one, which is discussion and possible action regarding a discontinuation of the addition of fluoride to drinking water. Let me say before this starts that it's going to be my recommendation that we hear Judd's presentation. And then we look after that to table this item. Um, for further review and further discussion, I don't think anybody's ready to make a decision on, on the matter tonight. So I will recommend that we hear his presentation and then I'll entertain a motion.
I just asked before we enter that discussion or whatever, if we could also get a bit of a summary of what happened at the
It's coming.
Wait, we all got it. Okay.
Okay, so a little bit of the history of the fluoride. Uh, dentist Frederick McKay discovered fluorosis of the teeth and that fluoride also helps prevent tooth decay in nineteen oh one, uh, as stated by many people previous, right? The U S started adding fluoride to community water supplies in nineteen forty-five as a study and it became readily adopted within the next five to ten years after that and put in. I don't know when it was first started or introduced into forest. I didn't have the opportunity to take deep enough to find that information out, but. Uh, and then twenty twenty-four, the National Toxicology Program, part of the U S Department of Health and Human Services, released findings showing effects of fluoride over exposure. Um, little that I know, when I started this, brought this forward, that I would be people from Florida to come up and wanna talk about stuff in the little old forest, but we did, right? So why are we discussing this today? I didn't put it in my memo. Um, but um, we have four wells. All but one of those wells, well, six, the one down south have capability to add fluoride. We currently need to replace those pumps. My job as Director of Public Services is to make sure that we're being prudent with our monies, right? Our tax dollars. The cost to replace those pumps and the equipment and installation is nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, approximately thirty-one hundred dollars per well. Uh, you're gonna say, okay, well, that's no chump change, but I'm not gonna go and just decide that we're gonna spend that money when there's questions that I have as having been in this uh, industry for a little bit and doing studies and understanding and researching it myself to understand what's happening. Um, and when this, when this came forward, uh, I said, whoa, we better wait. We need to have this conversation. It's not, I don't have the ability to just say we're gonna stop doing this. Um, so that's how we got to this point. Um, I've seen emails saying it's about politics. Has zero to do about politics for me. Um, and so we can just dispel that rumor immediately. So last night, we brought this up at the Public Services Committee um, meeting. Um, ultimately, it was voted on four, three to postpone this meeting to our next uh, Public Services Meeting in December, which is, as we've addressed, it will be occurring. Public Services, uh, we had a few people speak. Abby spoke, uh, I forget the gentleman's name. Um, Chris, he was there. Ashley spoke, right? Oh, she gave a form supporting it, right? So there's two speakers. Um, unfortunately, the recording was not started in time, so we don't have it captured, but we did uh, reached a good notes and shared the synopsis of that. Um, questions that the Public Services Committee asked me to look into further. Um, one is the number of municipalities considering removing it. Um, this is a pretty difficult number to ascertain how many communities are entertaining removing fluoride from their water systems. Um, my, to my knowledge, are fifteen in the state that are actively discussing it. I don't know how many may be thinking about it and haven't done it. Like myself, when I first thought of approaching the subject, I was like, I'm gonna be labeled a kook, right? Like, why am I bringing this forward, right? Um, so I, there may be many of that that are, that's happening. Um, they wanna know in Dane County, there are two, ourselves and Black Earth are uh, having active, open discussions about it. And Marshall just recently um, ended it. Near us also was Lodi Monroe. They ended fluoride in their drinking water. Um, out of the six hundred and eight water systems in Wisconsin, one hundred and eighty-eight add fluoride. So somebody said seventy-nine percent. That's not the case here in the state of Wisconsin. Um, the Public Service Committee asked, what does Europe do with fluoride in water? Most do not add it to the water. Um, what is our fluoride P P M? So we put out, we have to, uh, we're required by state statutes and the D N R to submit our co- consumer confidence report to the public. Um, we have naturally in our water one point, one point one P P M um, fluoride in their water. So we are subsidizing that with a, a compound um, that creates, that it delivers fluoride, but it has a multitude of other things in it, which I'll share with. Uh, what is the ADA stance? I think the uh, the Dental Association was well represented tonight and uh, they have endorsed fluoridation since nineteen fifty. Um, I was interested to hear Dr. Dunkle say that there's a lot of things uh, that they haven't studied to it and they're unsure of. Um, which is kind of led me to ultimately to say, I think. Which is kind of led me to ultimately to say, I think my recommendation is we should stop this until we know exactly what is there. Um, and if he's our chief dental person in the state of Wisconsin, he admitted to that. It's interesting. So what does fluoride do to pipes? Um, the spec sheet uh for hydrofluoric acid is to avoid metals. Um, gas, uh, glass as well, but I thought it was interesting. Uh, according to the National Institutes of Health, the daily adequate intakes birth eight to six months is point zero one milligrams for male or female. Seven to twelve months is point five milligrams. One to three years is point seven milligrams. Four to eight years gets to one milligram. So there's about two point four eight milligrams in one twelve ounce glass of water, uh, which is equivalent to point three five four eight liters. So if you take point seven milligrams per liter times point three five four eight liters, you get an equalish of point two four eight. So if you're feeding a baby six months, and my kids ate a lot, twelve ounces of water, um, you're giving them point two four eight when they're supposed to get point zero one. According to the National Institutes of Health, which is federal government prescribed stuff. Uh, most toothpaste sold in the United States contain a thousand to eleven hundred milligrams per liter of fluoride, which is about one point three milligram and a quarter teaspoon. A pea sized amount of toothpaste, which is about point seven five gram, contains about point four milligrams of fluoride. And as they discussed, there's warning labels on toothpastes advise you not to swallow it. Hydrofluoric acid is what we inject into our water to achieve the point seven PPM. This is what it does when it leaks onto our concrete floors. Um, this is wellhouse number four. This is wellhouse number one, or uh, two. Sorry, we don't have a one anymore. Uh, and this is wellhouse three. Uh, you can see the metal corrosion here. Uh, the scale has it and then there's a lot of pitting on the floor. What is hydrofluoric acid? I'm probably still not saying that right. I had to pronounce it most of the day today trying to get it right. Uh, but here's all the things that are in there, including lead, iron, arsenic iodide. Uh, massive, maximum dosage for potable water treatment is six milligrams per liter. So this is an acid and this is what we're putting in. Fluoride is just a simple ion F negative. So it's, this is more than just fluoride that we're putting into the water. Uh, again, there's new emerging uh information that's coming forward on a regular basis. It's often been stated, science is settled. It's not settled. It's science is always an ongoing investigation. Um, and so the Food and Water Res, Water Watch successfully sued the EPA and uh their EPA is required to do some additional uh investigation. The National Toxicology Program, which is part of United States Department of Health and Human Services, also has findings um that are there that I can send that out to you. I mean, I've got laundry list of things that I've um researched and found on it. So to me, some of the reasons to end fluoridation of the Forest Public Water at this time is to save adding new pumps, nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and save yearly on the purchasing of hydrofluoric acid yearly about thirty five hundred plus dollars. I mean, that dollar amount's only gonna go up with inflation and other things, right? It certainly puts our village employees, the guys that do the work in harm's way. Um, we have to currently take it from one bucket, put it into another bucket. So they have to gown up with uh rubber clothes and uh gloves and it's a toxic chemical. Greg can attest to what happens if you mix those two together and in well two, our oldest well. The DNR regulations um require us to have fluoride in a separate room. So all of our uh well three and well four have separate rooms. Well one does not, or well two does not. The chloride is a foot away from the fluoride and when they mix, it's uh, can be a deadly combination. So we are not in compliance with the DNR requirements at well number two. And well six, we don't even add fluoride. So you know, there's people that aren't getting the fluoride unless we have to use the booster station to allow water to go down. So for me, it's continuing to put our most vulnerable at risk for neurodevelopment and cognition loss until all the data is in. I would much rather we suspend it or stop it at this point. We can always add it back in should there be conclusive information that states that um it's there, but uh there are more ample ways to get fluoride today than in nineteen forty-five. And I think we need to uh stop giving the, taking away people's choice and letting have, which is a very uh inexpensive way to get life sustaining water is through a municipal water system, so.
Greg, did you want to add to that?
Greg got brought along for the ride cuz he's with me in this department. I don't know.
I'll add to the technical uh questions if there's anything on the wells.
All right, Jim.
I just wanted to add or maybe clarify something that Judd said. He said that we're not in compliance with the DNR. My understanding we're, cuz we're a grandfather, we probably still technically under compliance. We're just not under the current standards when we should upgrade or whatever.
Correct. Um, it could, they could force us later on to uh put that fluoride in a different area or um wall off a section on the well, um, but right now we do not have to.
All right, um, I had a question. I think I saw on one of the um sheets from Dane County Madison Public Health that they had dollars available to communities for storing fluoride. Have we looked into that at all?
Didn't know that was a thing. And I, to store fluoride would be like, I don't know what that means. Like, they'll store it for us or they'll give?
No, no, they would give money to the communities for con- containment.
So with the budget money that we have allocated for next year's budget, we are increasing our tank sizes so that way um we don't have to move chemical. The company that delivers chemical for us will actually deliver it and put it into the day tanks. Then we won't have to move chemical like we have for years.
Good, okay.
Will be safer for us.
All right, other questions? Rebecca?
Just a question about the compound of fluoride. Can you go back to that screen, that slide? So if you know, I mean, this is supposed to just be putting fluoride into the water, correct? Why the heck are we putting lead and all this other stuff in, in the water when lead has been shown to be very dangerous and toxic, especially for kiddos? I mean, this just makes me even more heavy metals and all this other stuff. I mean, this is just, we're asking for problems for our kids. And this is highly dangerous. I mean, just dealing with it is highly dangerous.
Yep, I'm concerned for my guys when they have to do that, right? So uh, it was addressed that during the budget season, we're asking people, this is in the budget. Like, the money's there to, to do this project, so if we don't do it, that money will just drop to the bottom line going forward. And um, we're doing a water study as Carol addressed in the committee, the whole, so those things will all be factored in, right? Um, and, and certainly it's, it's not a huge amount of money when you talk about uh nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for the pumps. Um, and then, you know, thirty five hundred, four thousand dollars a year for the fluoride. For me, that has zero impact. It's more about what's happening to, to folks, right? And it's not for adults. Um, it's for the little ones that um we have to take care of, so.
Any other questions for Judd and Greg? If not, I have one. Can you turn the heat up?
Sure, I'll still work on that, yep.
It's cold in here.
I thought it was warm too, but maybe I was in a hot seat, that's why, so.
You started this. All right. Thank you. With, with that, um, I would entertain a motion to table this for a further study because commu- or Public Services still needs time. Um, I need time.
So moved.
Postpone. We want to say postpone is the correct word, I've been told, so.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
And do we want to put a date on that? I would recommend maybe the second meeting in January.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Jim, does that give you guys enough time? Okay, all right. All right, we have a motion to postpone this decision until the second meeting of January. So I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So there's two who opposed it, Rebecca and Bill. Yep. So motion carries. We'll take this up again in January. Thank you, everyone who took the time to come and join us. Okay, let us um move to item nine point one, Old Business. Introduction and resol- of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine two, a resolution allocating sewer extension costs and levying special assessments against properties specifically benefited by the construction of sewer extensions to serve areas west of Interstate ninety, ninety-four thirty-nine.
So uh, this is an introduction only of uh Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine two, which authorizes assessment of uh properties benefiting, properties in the Village of DeForest benefiting from um the extension of the san- the West Sanitary sewer line, um, otherwise known as the, the sanitary sewer line to extending to Hickory Lane. And then north to south along Hickory Lane and back east, um, just at the, the, the back property line south of Cake Parkway to the Cake Parkway Terminus. You should have as part of your packet, uh, the resolution uh plus the study or the uh report uh authored by myself here with the help of our engineers. Um, I can bring that up if there's any questions within that report. Uh, provides the detailed cost of the cost of construction, um, the allocation of the assessment amounts uh per property that will benefit from it. Uh, those properties are separated also into um those properties and then town of Vianna properties. Something to note here, um, the assessment or uh resolution proposes to assess only properties in the Village of DeForest. We cannot assess properties that are outside the Village of the Forest or that. The schedule shows connection, uh, fees that would be assessed if and when tho- those properties need to connect to the sanitary sewer. So when we're talking about the assessment itself, uh, there isn't a specific date or time affiliated with when the repayment is. The repayment is set to be paid upon connection to our sanitary sewer system. I think I've covered it all. I'm happy to answer uh any questions on the report or the resolution out.
Yes, Jim, or Bill.
Say somebody from outside the village, say entity in Vienna wanted to hook up to our sewer. Is there a, would they be charged extra? I mean, in the past, it was, say, five thousand dollars. Now would they be charged, say, thirty thousand dollars?
So the schedule, the way that we, we um the way that we took a look at what the cost per parcel was, was by acreage. Because of sanitary sewer, there's no one absolute way to determine that math. So we, we thought that the most, the fairest way to do it was based upon the developable acres in that parcel. Uh, so those costs were allocated uh pursuant to our future land use plan, uh, where we and, and comprehensive plan. So that included both properties in the Village of DeForest and in Vienna. Those, there's no extra costs whether you're i- in Vienna versus DeForest, so we're not assessing anything extra. We're allocating it only based off the acreage per overall cost. And so you'll see.
That's the way I thought it was with the, the map that you had, cuz it showed areas and.
Correct.
You know, I'm saying is, is in the past, it'd be a hookup charge. Like any, like a house or business, it would be assessed a hookup charge, but their acreage is, would be charged in the future.
Yeah, so there's still the village, I mean, whenever someone hooks up to village water, there's still the standard connection fees that we have for water sewer. Uh, this is an additional charge on top of that specifically associated with this sanitary sewer line.
Great, thanks. I understand that.
Good question. Thank you. All right, other questions?
Uh, the, the resolution and report is available in the clerk's office for viewing if you do, would like to view it or if you hear from residents or non-residents who are interested in it. And from here, I believe we, uh, there's a notice requirement in a public hearing. And then the ordinance can be passed. I mean, yeah, the, the resolution can be passed after that, that, um, look.
Are, are we voting on this tonight or is this, or this is literally just the introduction?
This is just that.
I was gonna say, cuz there was no way I was gonna be able to read three hundred pages in three days.
The assessment ordinance that you passed at the last meeting or the meeting before basically establishes the procedure where you introduce this resolution and this resolution gets sent to the people who are affected by it before a public hearing on the assessments.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
I think about two hundred fifty pages of that three hundred dollar, uh, three hundred page packet as uh specs and plans for that infrastructure project.
Okay. All right, um, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to items ten, Presentations of Resolutions and Ordinances. Um, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine eight, a resolution to affirm the Village of DeForest budget and financial policies and to establish the twenty twenty-five operating budget for the General Fund and Special Revenue Debt Service, capital projects and enterprise funds and the subsidy of the DeForest Public Library Budget for the Village of DeForest, Dane County, Wisconsin. And in conjunction with the budget being established to levy taxes and set the mill rates. Carol is going to lead us through this. I would note that getting this budget done will let us send out tax bills this year, so she will be happy if she can do that. Yeah.
I win the prize for longest resolution title. Yeah, there's, there's not a whole lot that I need to really explain here. Um, as the memo stated in your packet, the um taxing portion of the budget has not changed from what we discussed previously and what was shown in the public hearing. So um, there have been a few changes in other areas. As we get more information and things get fine tuned and more accurate, we do make a few tweaks here and there. So the TIF districts have been affected, the utilities have been affected, but the taxing portion has stayed the same. So we're still looking at a roughly three percent increase to the average homeowner and a five, five dollar and seventy-six cent mill rate. So I don't know if there's anything more you really need me to explain. We do have a few um, we'll call them errors in the Fund two thirty, but it doesn't affect the overall total. It just affected a few line items. So if you're looking at the detailed budget breakdown, you, we will probably need to make some amendments to just move items around based on the line items. But in total, the, the revenues and expenses are accurate, so.
Okay.
There's a few. There's a few.
Any questions of Carol? The process and the information we've gotten all along has been very helpful in getting us to this point. So if there's no discussion or questions, I would ask, yes.
Carol, can you remind me, how does this look for the average homeowner in terms of? Because I, I suspect we're gonna have assessments that are gonna increase again based on what the market has been doing. Plus, we've got the school referendum which just passed. And now we've got this, so, which, even though I'm, I'm pleased with part of the budget, there's one aspect I've already voiced I'm not pleased with, but.
Bill, if you want to go way back to the beginning in that, on that analysis page. So as I mentioned, it's a 3% increase to the average homeowner. But we do have a little chart that shows if your home is worth this much, here's what the increase will be at the bottom of that analysis page. There you go, right there.
So this part did not change. So the average home is right around 400, what is it, like 370 or 400?
Yeah, something like 375.
Okay, so it'd be somewhere between that baseline B and baseline C. And that, is that per year or is that per month or what is that?
No, that would be the total on the tax bill. That's the whole year.
And that's assuming their assessment doesn't increase.
It's assuming their assessment increased on average. So we, we looked at total value of property in the village last year. And then again, well, it's as of 1122 and then, or, yeah, 2023 and then 1124. So in that year, the average value increase, if your home went up the same as the average, that would be your increase.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Now, if your assessment went up more than average, then it has a bigger impact.
Okay, thank you. That, that better explains it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, Jim.
So it's a bit of an opinion and a question too, but I think I've shared, I'll say what I feel is a frustration of mine that I, I would like, say, lower taxes than the increases that we have. I think that's pretty well-known. And I feel like it, it's, the process has improved. So I think you, Bill, and Carol and everybody else that's been part of it. And, and overall, I am real happy in how fiscal conservative we are. I still feel there's room for improvement and I search for ways to do that. Myself personally, I feel like I have a hard time doing that in the timeframe that we get it and stuff. And I, I know that's not necessarily under our control. So now to my question, as I see that we're also looking at different policies and stuff too as part of this resolution. And I'm, I'm thinking I want to take like a deeper in-depth look at the policies if there's ways that, say, I can, again, look at those. I think it's gonna be outside of this meeting because that's probably a more in-depth conversation that I gotta have with Bill and Carol, but I just want that to be known. That's something I want to look into. I don't know if that, so the question being, is that something I work with you guys and maybe we can bring it up in an interim outside of the budget process or maybe included in the budget process? Next time, do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, so the budget policy, the operational budget policy, debt management policy, capital improvement policy are the same policies that we have year to year. They get, the reason why we add them to the budget is a restatement of approval of that policy, reconfirmation of that. We can definitely workshop it. I think it makes sense instead of, Jim, and I don't mean anything by this, but if we can do it as a group, I think, and as staff, we can have a better understanding of the policy ideas that this board is having. And it'll provide a better opportunity for you all to understand and learn what we do on the staff side when we, we go through the policy too and look at the budget itself. So that's what I would propose. I, I can build it into our just calendar for next year. And as we go through and initially talk about, you know, very early in the year, May, April, talk, when we're talking about objectives, that's, that's the time when we want to be talking policy at the, and so that, because everything else following that kind of is dictated by that policy.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I agree. I remember it, it was changed in 2000, I believe, before you and Carol got here. And every couple of years, we should go back and review it just to see, you know, like the, the maximum amount of, what do they call that, the 25% holdback, you know, is that? We haven't decided that, you know, that's one of the things you keep talking about is, what should we do with that? That'd be a good opportunity. Oh, I just want to clarify the school referendum. That tax won't be on until 2025, Bill, correct?
I would assume. I don't know.
So, I mean, January 1st, my taxes aren't gonna go up $300 before, it'll be another year.
Yes.
Correct, that's, there's some confusion in the community about that. It's the one that'll come kick in.
That is true.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thanks.
That is, that is true. There is confusion about.
There is, yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments? If there aren't any, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-098.
I would make a motion to approve 2024-098.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jan. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, okay.
Trustee Langrave? We're doing a roll call vote.
Oh, did you, Bill Langrave?
Yeah, trustee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking about, all right, maybe, uh, no, I'm sorry. I was off in space. You gotta call him Jim, I think.
Trustee Little. Trustee Little.
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
No.
Trustee Stefan Hagen-Hahn?
Aye.
Trustee Witherspoon?
Yes.
President Cahill-Wolfram?
Aye.
Motion passes for two.
Thank you. All right. 10.2, a Resolution 2024-099, Resolution Establishing Stormwater Utility Charges for 2025. Carol?
Yes. We had talked previously about potentially increasing the stormwater rates by 50 cents per month per ERU. But in hindsight, it, we decided the better route to go was to take the Vector truck out of the annual budget. We've been trying to move vehicles and equipment out of the borrowing and pay for them directly. We decided that Vector truck being a $400,000 vehicle was probably worthwhile to keep in the borrowing. So that took some pressure off of the stormwater rates and we held them at 25 cents. So the budget you just approved does have an estimate of just the 25%, a 20 cent increase, 25 cent increase per month per ERU. So that is what is being presented in this resolution and it, it fits in line with what we have in the budget.
Okay. Questions on that, Jim?
I guess I'd say I personally agree with the $400,000. It's hard to say buy it outright without the loan or whatever we're proposing. I guess I just want to add clarification. I'm assuming it's, the, the back truck is completely in the sewer utility. It's not spread across different other portions of the village budget. Is that correct?
It is not, and it is not completely in stormwater. It is spread, it does have an allocation to it, but it put a lot of pressure on stormwater. The portion that stormwater was gonna pay for put a lot of pressure on the stormwater rates. So as a whole, we decided to put that back into the borrowing. That helped relieve, relieve some of the pressure on stormwater. It will also help relieve some of the pressure on the sewer rate and the water rate and some of the capital fund as well.
Okay.
By, by putting it back in the borrowing. So there, all the other vehicles that were in the CIP plan are still going to be paid for directly. It was just that one vehicle that we took out and decided to keep in the borrowing because it did put so much pressure on stormwater specifically, the portion that they paid for. So it helped us keep that rate to the 25 cents.
Bill Chang?
Eventually, the rates will come back to pay the debt service on, on the vehicle. It's just not all at once upfront. So that, that's how we relieve the pressure.
Okay. Rebecca?
So are we borrowing that this, this next year to fund that then?
Yes, we're gonna include the cost of that vehicle in with borrowing when we go to borrow in the spring.
So how is that going to affect what we've already talked about for borrowing for next year? How, is that, I'm assuming that's gonna increase the borrowing?
Well, yes, just by that, that vehicle.
So how is that going to affect how we do? Because we always try to keep things pretty level.
Yeah.
We don't want it to be-
$400,000 when you spread, when you allocate it among the funds that are gonna pay for it and then spread it over 10 years, it becomes a small enough number you're not going to, it's not gonna have that big of an impact on any one fund in any one year. Does that make sense?
I, I understand that part. I'm talking about the borrowing. The overall borrowing for the year. That's what I'm talking about. How much are we borrowing?
Mouse mover just left.
3.2? And it's gonna push it up to what, 3.5-ish?
Doesn't all hit, so what you're, the number you're referring to is just the-
Oh, so only a portion of it?
Portion. And only, yes, and only a portion of that will end up in, in Fund 400.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it, it gets, like I said, it gets spread out enough that it won't impact any one fund too heavily. It won't impact the taxpayers.
I think that-
Too greatly.
I think that finally answered the question that I had. Thank you.
It, it, it will impact the, the borrowing, but I can't tell from here which tab I need to hit in order to show that to you.
I think it was 3.2. And now it's 3.6. No, you're incorrect.
Trying to get, that's not the actual budget. It's the budget that he had up previously that he was scrolling through.
Well, that was on.
There it is. Okay, sorry. So if we get to the CIP.
Sorry, close your eyes for a second.
Last, last night, I was scrolling through and I was, I was getting really nauseous. So was Bob.
It's close, it's close, okay. So the taxpayer portion is now, what does that number say, 3.361? 51, so it is up to 3.3 million now.
I'm sorry, and how is that with our overall percentage that we're, we always try to?
It does not affect the overall percentage of the taxpayers at this point in time because we're gonna borrow for that in 2025 and then start paying it back in 2026. So it's not gonna impact taxpayers until 26.
It's potentially going to, but yeah, okay, thanks.
So the Vector truck, 164,000 of it hits Fund 400. That's the portion that we have taken out of immediate spend and now put into borrowing.
And it was something we were already planning on anyway.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then, we're talking about the leaf vacuum truck, right? No. This is the sewer vacuum.
Truck that we use, so it, we use it for jetting clogs, sewer things. And then we also can use it to hydroexcavate. It has multitudes of uses. We use it an awful lot.
All right. The less popular back truck.
So you got a sewer back up in your yard, then you want it.
Yeah, right, right, okay. All right. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2024-099? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.3, Resolution 2024-100, Resolution Authorizing Community Development Director to Submit a Grant Application to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corp. Through Its Vibrant Spaces Grant Program.
Motion to approve 2024-100.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Good job, Alex.
You can go home now.
10.4, Resolution 2024-101, A Resolution Authorizing the Village President and Clerk to execute lease amendments for storage space at the DeForest QuickTrip Athletic Complex. Reese?
I honestly didn't think you were-
Buy another mouse?
I was just going to grab the mouse and I was like, oh, I should probably close some of these tabs. So this is, we have a annual lease for the storage building out at the athletic complex with Windsor Heat and Forest Area Youth Football. As I mentioned in my memo, we're not looking to increase rates for 2025. Both groups are supportive of renewing and have no plans to leave at this time and will continue to kind of evaluate if, if rates need to go up. But they've been great partners so far and looking to continue that.
Motion to approve 2024-101.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Check register was in your packet. Committee, Commission, and Board reports. Update regarding the library, Tashidra's not with us. DeForest Public Safety Commission. Why don't you do this, Jan?
I guess we approved one liquor license. That, that was it. It was a short, quick meeting.
All right. Let's continue with the DeForest Area Community and Seniors Center. Jan?
One thing that's moving forward is we now have just signed with Beerbecker to start drawing up the plans and surveying for our new patio area, outdoor workout area. And also, I believe that is going to include bringing the driveway, moving the driveway over to the, I guess that'd be the east side of the, the lot. So those are the big, that's the big thing. And of course, we're, oh, and then we also have started to look at our strategic plan. And that was just started at our last meeting last week.
Okay, thank you. Community Development Authority. Do you want to give that update? It was-
Colorblind.
Colorblind. Um, we approved new leases that will go in place after we transition out of the public housing program, uh, as well as facility admissions policy. Approved two relocation plans for, um, properties that the CDA is looking to acquire uh, for personal property. We approved our operating budgets for redevelopment and the various housing, uh, divisions. And then, uh, uh, there's something else, oh, an amendment to an option purchase.
Yep, right. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission, Jim?
Planning and Zoning Commission, we discussed waiving the screening for a rooftop mechanical unit on the QuickTrip building, a rather large mechanical. The summary of that is, there was quite a bit of discussion, and we are not gonna do screening, but color it in a way that matches the building, and hopefully hide it sort of that way. We discussed and approved a site plan for the QuickTrip Medical Clinic. We talked about the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Uh, discussion regarding housing strategies, that would have been Alex again, and potential subdivision ordinances and site plan procedural standards amendments. We discuss that as a future topic for the committee, and that is it.
Thank you, and Public Services Committee?
Public Services, you got a bit of a summary today. I haven't looked at the summary myself, but I'm assuming that's more about the, the fluoride that we discussed tonight. But other topics that we discussed last night at the Public Service Committee was the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan again. A targeted runoff management grant, which my understanding of that is as for more or less the phase two of the stream bank restoration plan. And we're talking about getting a consultant on board or going, I'm assuming the solicitations as far as doing park designs or account, or planning and community listen sessions, uh, and just lots of conceptual designs for different, many different park plans that are, don't have plans yet. Um, and I'll do a shameless plug, plug for Reese to remember the December third meeting. Thank you.
That was shameless, but thank you. The Forest Windsor Fire and EMS District, um, we've continued with our ongoing, um, budget and, um, accounts receivable saga. I don't know that we did a lot of other things. It was a pretty quick meeting, so it was about an hour. So I think that was most of it. We're, we are starting to get a better understanding of, of that issue, and I think we're getting closer to resolving, so. Okay, um, Committee, Commission, and Board Minutes were in your packet. Um, Bill was gonna do the DCCBA update. There's not a lot that I have on that right now. So I don't have anything else in a president's report. And with that, I would entertain a motion to convene and to close session.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, I would ask Kelly to take roll call. Carol, thanks for all the work you did on the budget this year. That was a lot of work, and we appreciated it.
Are we ready for roll call? Trustee Langrave?
Yes.
Trustee Little? Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Stefan Haggenhan?
Aye.
Trustee Witherspoon?
A faster, yes.
President Cahill-Wolffgram?
Yes.
Motion.
From closed, so I would entertain, unless there's other business to come before this body, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Post.